June twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Select Board. With me is Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Marianne Gulaboff, Mike Betcourt, John Fallon, and myself, Rich Mucci, the Chair. We're here tonight for a specific purpose. We're here to interview our applicants for Town Council. We, just to recap, well, we had an RFP go out for Town Council a few weeks back. We've got several responses, and we narrowed down that list. And we're going to interview five law firms this evening in half-hour increments. We have some set questions for each of the law firms that we'll be asking. And I think unless anyone has any preliminary business, I think we can get started right away. Is it okay with everyone? So I'd invite Jay Tallerman and Kate Fedorov to come join us at the table. How are you?
Fine, thank you. How are you?
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for joining us this evening. So we appreciate you submitting your RFP. It was very informative, and we all had some time to digest it. So, you know, we'll ask you a series of questions, and then I'll open it up to further questions from the board as well. So I'll start. If you want to just introduce yourselves to begin with, we can start that way.
I'm Jay Tallerman with Meade Tallerman Acosta. Kate Fedorov is one of the partners in the firm, joining me here today.
Great. Well, thanks for coming, like I said. So the first question that we had for you was if you could explain your approach to providing Town Council services, if you could include in your answer a discussion of daily operations, how you see the relationship working between town staff, your attorneys, and elected officials, and ways in which you will ensure a cost-effective approach to providing those services.
So sure, and I'll probably be able to respond to some of the bullet points in those questions, just along with an intro. So we've been around since about two thousand and four as a firm, and we've grown since then. I came from Copelman and Page, where I was a partner there. Kate came from the city of Brockton a few years after we began. The way we wanted to look at municipal council services was a little bit different. We wanted to foster a team approach, and we wanted to figure out ways to do that, where we could be part of the team rather than the attorney that's held at arm's length that'll just speak when spoken to. So there was a combination of the way we approach our business plus our fee structures, which had to be structured in a way such that you could pick up the phone and call us without fear of the clock running out by March of every year's fiscal year budget. So we worked hard at that. We are, many of us are municipal officials or were municipal officials, so we get the drill too. I'm the moderator in my town. Lisa Meade was the three-term mayor in her town. A lot of people have served on different boards in the towns they live. So we try and make ourselves available through office hours, visits. We have a series of flat fee arrangements that we've kind of pioneered to make it comfortable for towns if they want to opt for that. We do seminars. We will sit in with boards. Our fee structures allow us to sit in with boards and be very collaborative. We value our reputa, our relationships with town administrators and town managers, and that's how, you know, we generally approach this, from being a member of the team rather than someone that's off somewhere in a oak-paneled room somewhere that'll only speak when they're spoken to. We respect the policy line, of course, and that's the balance that we have to give, but we will give the benefit of our experience because we've been doing this for a long time. We're Town Council in twenty-six towns now, Special Counsel for dozens of other towns on occasion, for the town of Winchester, so.
And I'll add a little bit to that, too. I think our approach is one because we tried to integrate ourselves within the town, right? And I came from the city of Brockton, so it was every day you had your plan, and then your hair suddenly goes on fire because there's ten different emergencies that you didn't anticipate having to deal with that day. So because we integrate ourselves into the town as a team member, we are more proactive, and therefore the results are that you have less litigation, less confrontation, because if you have the advice on the front end, you can make the appropriate choices, or at least the choices with sufficient information to know what the repercussions are going to be before you make those choices. So rather than, and that's what attracted me to this firm, because I was used to that. I was brought into every meeting, pulled in every day. How do we problem solve this? How do we figure out what our strategy is going to be? Rather than we have this problem because we didn't go in with a strategy, right? So I think it actually works really well for the town because it avoids controversy, litigation, you know, settlements in that way.
Can you give us a couple of examples of how you look around the corner? Because to me, I value that. You have a strategy, but how will keep it, how will keep us from getting ourselves into a problem that we don't even know could occur, based on your experience of other communities?
So we, I mean, again, it can be, it can be a lot of different ways. So I'll start with office hours is one key way that we do it. So built in with our flat fee arrangements, whether it's a full litigation included or litigation excluded, we show up in town once a month, twice a month, whatever arrangement we make, and we talk to people. We have those discussions. We've got a big project coming up. Will you come and do a site visit with us? We've got this sixty-one A project that's coming down the pike, and we want to know what are our risks and benefits, and if we buy this property or not. Or we have, in Kate's case, a lot of big labor problem coming up, or a big union negotiation coming up. How do we get ahead of that? Another way we do this is, again, built into our fee structure, our attendance at board hearings. So that's three, four a month, whatever we decide is, and whatever the town decides is appropriate. So it'll be a fly on the wall, but if you have a big forty B project, a big shopping mall project, or a big, in the case of the Select Board, a hearing on, say, a sixty-one A purchase, a potential development agreement, something like that, we're there for those meetings. We're sitting with you. We're helping advise on those, again, while respecting the various policy prerogatives that the town officials have. These are things that we try and be part of that team. The legal services with our experience, especially in the land use corridor, really help us identify, well, here's something you may want to look at on this, or I've got a development agreement that would work really well here, or we've seen this come up before, here's how this statutory system works. There's different ways to do this. A small microcosm, again, not particularly with respect to the way we conduct fees, is kind of the experience I had with this board when we were working on the field light questionnaire. We sat and we talked about it. We had some good conversations about it. We went through if this, then that. We had a few executive sessions during that process where we said, here's the risks and benefits, here's the strategy. We do that on a daily basis, and that's really our bread and butter. We try and get involved there, and then we try and make it comfortable from a fee structure for you to invite us back. It's good for us, it's good for you, and having us around as part of the team, albeit in the background, can, we think, pay dividends in the long run.
Yeah, no, continuity is important. You mentioned the team approach, which I completely understand, you know, collaborative approach is great, but, you know, if Beth, you know, has to get a hold of someone, you know, or there's an issue, I mean, is there a point person that would be assigned to Winchester, and who would that be?
So that would be me. So I would be the point person, and in our proposal, we say Lisa and Adam, my two partners, would be point people as well as a backup, because we always want to have a backup. Winchester's a busy community, and we want to make sure you have that service. In addition, we have people appointed to individual matters. A lot of times that would be me as well, certainly on the land use side. But we have the head of our litigation group, my partner, Mike Kenefek, might lead on certain litigation, and he would be the contact there. But everything would be from a single point down. So no matter what, whenever I talk to the community, I'm CCing Beth. Whenever Beth or anyone in the community talks to us, we think it's good practice to CC me, so I can help ensure that whoever might be providing services, we're six partners and eight or nine associates at any given point in time, that we can make sure that there's continuity of service. We're a very partner-driven law firm, where the partners are out front and the associates are more in the background. That's unlike some models where you make money by putting the associates out front. I'm not, that's not a slight, that's just the law firm business. But we try and make sure that you've got people at the top out front at all times. And if we need assistance from our associates, then we'll do it. But we are six strong partners right out front in most of the things, and certainly I'd be the point person.
And we coordinate internally. You know, I have a team of people that I assign, assign people, assign projects to or whatever, but we make the sausage privately, so you don't have to get involved in that. And we'll coordinate and figure who has the most pertinent information, or who most recently did something similar and assigned that. And that helps us with our efficiency, too. But I know that I have weekly meetings, and I call the associates in our office daily and check in so that we're sure things are being done timely, efficiently, and completely, you know? So, and I know Jay does the same with his group.
And some of that is by subject area, too. One example is Kate, I don't know how this happened and evolved. Kate has become our in-house expert on marijuana issues, which are changing daily. We have a team of three people that are doing some work on this every day, staying ahead of the new legislation, working on host community agreements, working on enforcement issues, and that's a team that we have behind it. So while I might be the point person to make contact with that team, then you get someone at the top of that team, and Kate, who is going to then work with her team to make sure that you get the services you need.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned fires, right? I think, you know, as a town, I think at times we feel like there's a lot of fires that, you know, are burning here, and it's, you know, that safety net for our staff to be able to, you know, pick up the phone and call someone and make sure, you know, have that person be available, I think, is important to us. So, you know, with twenty-six towns that you represent, you know, what is the availability, you know, if Beth, you know, should call at a random time during the day, you know?
So I think that, and I would hope that past experience proves this out, that I'm like very responsible. The entire team is very responsive, even if it's, I'll get back to you in ten minutes. You'll never wait. The other thing we do is grow. We know that we've become a more popular firm with some of the communities out there. We're not going to stand pat with six partners and six or seven associates. We're going to add people at all times. We added two attorneys this year, one a generalist, another labor person to assist Kate in our growing labor practice. We're adding more partners, interviewing new partners. The top, the six people at the top will likely be the primary contacts for the towns, and we spread out that work appropriately. But, you know, I know you're going to hear this from every single attorney you speak to tonight, but we think our responsiveness is right up there, and we encourage you to call all of our references and ask them about that, too.
Yeah, and it could be, so we're flexible in terms of, we're not resistant to drafting a formal memo. Sometimes things warrant that, right? They may be public-facing, they may just require a deeper dive. But before coming into this interview, I received a call from one of my clients, and he was heading into an executive session, and he said, text me a couple of taglines, and that works because it was a fire. It was something that he wasn't anticipating. Here's what you can do to solve that at the front end, and it's as simple as a text. So I'm getting texts throughout the day, emails throughout the day. I think there's never any situation where an email's gone beyond twenty-four hours, but more importantly, sometimes things can't wait twenty-four hours. You can always get a hold of any one of us. And I think we're pretty, we're conscious of expanding, not just because we want to service our clients, but we also have this philosophy in our firm that we are human beings, and we have families, and we have other commitments, too. So we don't want to grow without growing the firm because it hurts our personal lives, and then we're less effective as lawyers and all of those things. So it's something that we're really conscious of and monitoring to make sure that no one person is doing too much.
And I think long gone are the days when everything is a super-long researched memo on letterhead. We do that, but we also want to respond quickly, like, this is where this is going, here's your options, let's go through it in a little bit more depth later, but give you the information you need, whether it's a complex ethics opinion, a zoning opinion, municipal finance opinion. You know, we try and get that information to you quickly, and then we'll back up and do something more formal as necessary. But we try and make sure you've got the benefit of the preparation that reflects our experience in all these subject areas.
Yeah, my question is, so bullet three on that first question. So how do you propose to make your services available to town boards and staff outside of the town manager's office? And this, you know, we have boards that require having counsel in the meetings, right? When they have hearings, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals. So how would you handle that, given, so from the, the flat fee structure has one office hours a month, how would those other meetings be handled?
So, you know, so this is how, I mean, the proposal states one set of office hours a month and three board meetings a month. We have never charged anyone if a fourth board meeting is required, because in August we might get one. I've never charged as outside of the flat fee for someone for a town because they needed us four or five times in a month around town meeting season, around a heavily debated housing project, for example, if you needed us a second time. It's all in, in that. So that's the cost-effective way of doing that. We have some limits on it because it's just our experience that this is how we can provide things at a set number. We've never found that a town has abused the privilege. Towns call us in when they need us in, and we respond and come in, whether it's one meeting a month, three meetings a month, you know, two zoning boards, one ConCom, one zoning board, it's fine. We do that in one Select Board meeting in the office hours. If you needed us a second time or needed us to come out and do a site visit or some other kind of meeting, that's the kind of stuff that we do under these flat fee arrangements. And we've worked really hard to refine them. Not all of our towns use them, and some of them use them in different ways, but they've been really successful over the last twenty years or so.
All right, for the sake of time, we're going to jump to question number two. Mike?
Sure, I'll jump in. Thanks, Rich, and thanks for coming tonight and applying. So as I'm sure with many of your clients, land use is a lot of the work that we do on the legal side and where we spend a lot of money. Can you explain your approach to land use services and your expected interactions with the planning board and ZBA, and your expected role in those, in hearings related to matters before each board, so?
I mean, we really think our land use group is second to none. We've litigated many of the top cases, whether it be Dover Amendment cases, wetland cases, zoning and planning cases. Our names are all over that, whether it's myself, I've done a lot of both Superior Court and Land Court on the trial level, but also appellate court and the Supreme Judicial Court, I've argued a ton. Adam Costa, one of our partners, extensive experience. Brian Winter, another partner, extensive experience. Lisa Meade is a leading figure in land use matters across the Commonwealth as well. We really think we're, we've got a really well-rounded shop in any of the disciplines and any of the land use boards, zoning and planning, and understanding the tension between those two sometimes. Conservation commissions are something that we pay a lot of attention to, and land use issues that come up for the Select Board, too. I mentioned sixty-one A before, but that we consider that a subset. So we think that we've got a great team on that, whether it's litigation or counseling a board through a permit, or working with the planning board to develop a set of zoning bylaws, or a conservation commission on their regulations, or a board of health on adopting regulations under Chapter one eleven. These are a lot of things we've done, especially in COVID, too, where we've had to rejigger a whole bunch of regulations and really figure out a different way of practicing in land use disciplines when you can't actually hold meetings. So we love our team, and we think it's really well-rounded in that regard. And again, the structure, as we talked about, really is conducive to helping those boards do what they do best, whether it's attending those meetings or meeting with them outside of those meetings.
Yeah, I think in particular for connecting with those boards and commissions, that office hour piece is really helpful, I think, for us, just because, you know, every day is putting out fires and also long-range work that we need to do. And so it's hard when you're responding to things, but also you need to get things ready for fall time meeting, right? So and teed up that, you know, may, on the planning side, you know, zoning side, might take a little bit of personal connection with those boards, so.
And we also have no fixed ideology on how those office hours are set. In some of our communities, it's kind of a free-for-all, where I'll come down and sit in a room for the day, and people will come in and come out. Others, there's a sign-up sheet. Others, still, it's signing up. Sometimes I'll come out for one issue and then skip over to another issue. It's really how the town likes to set those up. We can, we've done it a number of different ways. We're comfortable getting used to you rather than us dictating how we want to have those kinds of things set up.
Great.
Along those lines, you know, we've become accustomed here in Winchester that, you know, at our planning board meetings, at our ZBA, you know, that we often have Town Council present, especially ZBA hearings. So is that, would we expect to see you attend those hearings and be that liaison, or would it be someone on your staff?
Well, I think it would, it would depend a little bit. Certainly, I'm the top of the pyramid when it comes to both our services overall and our land use services. Might you get Adam Costa or Lisa Meade on a particular matter that's in their wheelhouse? Or if it ends up being marijuana permitting or something like that, you might get, you might get Kate, or if it's something that's particularly litigious, you might get Mike. Yeah, but you'd get them from the beginning, and we would try and maintain that contact. You're not, to contact, you're not going to get a revolving door. Do scheduled conflicts happen in this business like any other legal business? Sure, they do, but we strive really hard to make sure that if we get a matter before the planning board or the zoning board or the conservation commission, that there's going to be continuity, and from a partner level on down.
And we try to ensure that that's seamless, too, because conflicts do arise, right? We do serve a number of communities, but because we work so closely with one another, we're pretty in tune with what the other one is doing. And there's a lot of collaboration, especially with the land news group. I used to do land use, and now I say, you guys can do most of that, except for marijuana, which, again, is odd. But there is so much collaboration that it is seamless. I've never heard a single complaint, even from the towns that I, you know, manage the account for, that, well, we saw this person this month, and now we saw this person, and they weren't up to speed. It doesn't work that way in our firm.
And we design the firm in a way so that there's no internal competition. None of our pay structures or compensation structures are silos at all. Everyone's encouraged to work together. There's no such thing as someone taking a case and just throwing up their blinders and not getting assistance and help and advice from the other people around them. It just doesn't happen at our firm.
Thank you. Marianne, you want to ask the next question?
Yeah, so question three is, in what situations would you expect to bring in outside special counsel? Does town currently have independent bond counsel and legal counsel?
So, and Kate can discuss this a little bit, too. We do some labor counsel on ourselves, so we, and we know you have outside labor counsel. We do that work as well. We don't do cable licensing. That's usually a separate discipline. There's like four attorneys in the whole Commonwealth to do it. I don't know how that develops.
We do also have outside cable licensing.
Routine tax title is generally a specialized service that other firms do. We do specialized tax title where it requires a little, a higher level of beyond the routine processing of matters in Land Court. Otherwise, we handle most everything and are capable of most handling most everything. I'll give you an example where we didn't feel comfortable, and we're straight with the town, and brought in someone else. We had a situation, like a lot of communities, where DEP said a couple of our wells were contaminated with PFAS. We identified some responsible parties that had contributed to that. It wasn't municipal contribution of the PFAS. So we had to initiate action against them to get the cost recovery, to bring our wells up to snuff for DEP. We brought in an outside firm for that, that specializes in that kind of, kind of toxic tort kind of activity, and they are processing that with our assistance. But as we would have just been duplicating efforts, and it's not something that we see every day, but it's very rare that we bring in someone from outside for anything, whether it's litigation or permitting or general advice. It happens very infrequently. I mean, we're lucky that we have enough breadth and the team, and a big enough team, to handle almost everything that comes at us.
Yeah, and to the extent that dovetails with if you're conflicted out, so you need to bring in outside counsel. Again, I was racking my brain trying to think, and I could think of only one circumstance, and it was so unique and unusual, where we were conflicted out of one matter in front of one of our municipal clients, because I think the reason is we focus so much on our municipal clients, and we do do private work as well in other communities. But when we bring in new clients, we vet them through our system, and if there's at all a possibility that there will be a conflict even in the future, or it would put us in a position of having to take a position that's contrary to a municipal position, we oftentimes just turn those clients away because our focus is really serving the municipalities. They're the central piece of our operation, as opposed to we have a huge private practice, and we fill in with municipal clients. It's the exact opposite. So we'd rather turn away a private client than have it impact our municipal clients.
Have you ever found yourself in a situation where you've had, like, an internal conflict in a town where maybe boards, you know, differ or staff, and how, how do you handle that?
It happens somewhat frequently, and, you know, I mentioned the planning board, zoning board, potential conflict a little earlier. That's where we see it somewhat frequently, where, say, a variance gets issued by a zoning board, and the planning board disagrees, and they want to appeal. I had a situation in two other boards in the town of Kingston over wind turbine permitting where they disagreed. In those situations, we look to our appointing authority, which is this board, and say, what is, where do you want us to provide services? Sometimes that area that you want us to provide services is work with both of those boards while disclosing that we're retro primarily to the Select Board and see if we can get them to work it out. Other times, the Select Board may decide, look, you're going to represent the planning board here, or you're going to represent this board against that board, and that's just the way it is. That's the position we want to take. So we've been pretty successful in helping Select Boards kind of work with the other boards beneath them in mediating these disputes, but sometimes you can't do it, and we are loyal to what the Select Board's wishes are in those situations.
Thank you. We only have a couple of minutes left, but I think there's, you know, one or two questions that we have that I think we haven't covered tonight. So maybe, John, why don't you ask number five?
Sure. It's about training to town staff and elected officials and so forth, and actually, we have a lot of people who've expressed an interest in that, so.
Yeah.
What do you do for the communities?
So we do routine training. So twice a year, generally speaking, we offer training as part of our package for open meeting law, public records, the ethics, the things that you're bumping up against all the time. I also do discrimination training, but I know you have Labor Counsel for that. But while we do those trainings, and they are to some degree routine, we really try to tailor them to the community, right? Because we're so in touch with the communities that we know a lot of the issues that they've been recently facing. So sometimes open leading, meeting law training can dovetail into how does a chairman also manage his or her meeting, you know? So depending upon the situation that the town may be facing, or repeat offenses or things like that, you may alter your training to address those things. So we're careful to cover all the bases, to ensure general compliance, but we really try to focus on each community in a different way when we do those trainings. And we, because we recognize boards are meeting at night and things of that nature, we offer generally morning sessions and then evening sessions to accommodate all those other volunteer board members so that they can participate as well and not be in other volunteer board members so that they can participate as well and not be inconvenienced. So we really try to educate people on the front end again, so you avoid problems on the back end.
And those trainings are available and part of our fee structure, whether it's even either the flat fee arrangements or hourly. If they're hourly, we do those free of charge for, for the community. We also will do special things. I train land use boards frequently. If you have a significant turnover, I did one recently for a conservation commission that had three or four new members where I talked to them about how they go about their duties. I'm also a former member of my own, the conservation commission in my town. So whatever it may be, we, we can do various trainings. We do try and do at least yearly the open meeting law ethics and public records for both the employee and the board members.
And if it's something new and hot, I did in the beginning when marijuana first became legal, there were so many options, right? Are you going to prohibit it? Are you going to prohibit it in part? All of those things. So even just updates to the boards to say, here are your options rather than you saying, wow, there's this new piece of legislation, how am I going to react? How can I react? You know, so that's not necessarily a training, but it's a way to bring information on kind of new and hot topics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
India, why don't you ask the, the last question?
Yeah, so speaking of sort of hot topics, could you describe your experience with matters related to affordable, creation of affordable housing, including issuing RFPs for the development of town owned land?
So we do, and again, I'm not sure this is a good thing per se, given how tough it is for municipalities. We've handled more 40B projects than in any firm in the state. It's not even a, really a close question. But we do a lot of 40Rs. We do tremendous amount of development agreements with developers who are bringing affordable housing projects into towns. And then we also do, as you suggested, or as is implied in the question, projects with respect to use of town property. I'll give you an example. We had a town meeting last night in the town of Medfield that Lisa attended. We're special council to Medfield. They had an old state hospital that they ended up obtaining from the state in Medfield State Hospital. It was the site of the Shutter Island movie.
Oh.
So, and they took them years to pass the zoning. We worked with town council and with the land use boards to get them through town meeting. We worked with them to formulate an RFP which went out. It started out, it was like a two-phase RFP. We worked to build up that contract and development agreement and then they had to take it all back to town meeting to tie it all up last night and we did that as well. The next part of that is that we're going to be doing the land use permitting on that, multiple special permits as well as conservation commission orders of conditions are going to be required for it. So we've ushered that through a few years back through a combination of CPA funds, federal funds and developer added funds. We spearheaded the redevelopment of the Easton shovel shops, which was an endangered federal landmark in the center of Easton and worked with a private developer using municipal funds through an extensive process that took multiple years for us to get the permits across the finish line. We did that one under 40B. So these kinds of things are really kind of our bread and butter and we've done a lot of them.
And that one came out beautiful. I'm an Easton resident and it came out really lovely. Yeah.
Well, I think that's all the time we have for tonight. So appreciate you coming in and answering our questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
All right. Next up, we should have Karis North from Murphy Hess, Toomey and Lehane. She might have Cindy Amara and Kevin Freitag with her. Hi.
Good evening.
How are you? Thank you for coming in. Sorry we're running a couple of minutes late. We got started a little.
No worries.
It's tough to keep to the, the thirty minutes.
So a lot of information to share back and forth.
Exactly. So I'm Rich Mucci, I'm the chair of the select board. Thank you for coming tonight, meeting with myself and my colleagues. We do have some, a couple of set questions for you, but at this point I'd just give you a moment to introduce yourselves.
I'm Karis North and I would be your lead town council in our approach, which we'll talk about a little bit more. And with me are my colleagues Cindy Amara and Kevin Freitag.
Hello everyone.
Who are all part of the team, MHTL, that we would bring all our experience to bear for the town of Winchester.
So why don't we jump right into that then and explain your approach to, if you were our town council and, you know, maybe tell us about daily operations, what we could expect from the town, interaction with your firm.
Sure. So when we decided to apply to Winchester to do this work for you, we thought a lot about the town and the fit with our skills and ability, the size of the town, the, the experience of the town and, and how it, how it works with our other clients and chose Cindy and Kevin, and you'll see as we talk more tonight about our, our different experience. But we do, we do a team approach, but we do have a lead council who is overall responsible for everything, so that would be me. And then, and then I would have Cindy and Kevin as my backups. The, the great thing about that is that we are all experienced council in other communities, so we've all had experience dealing with all of the issues. So if you can't get me, you can get terrific assistance from either Cindy or Kevin if I'm not available at a particular instant, although like everybody else, we're, we're tied to these electronic devices that you all have. And so we, we, we work really hard to be responsive. We really try to learn your operation. We work principally with your, your town manager, the chair of your select board and whoever else is authorized for legal services under your town charter. And then we also work, so we get to know your department heads as well. We do do office hours. We recommend them on a monthly basis, sometimes every other week, depending on the community and the issues, so that we can understand what's going on in Winchester. We can build the relationships with the department heads and we can help look for those issues that might be a problem down the road and we can be proactive about it. And that's one of the best ways that we think we can save you money and time is to really be thinking ahead and in advance and to be as efficient as possible with the legal advice that we give and to, you know, to have it as targeted as possible. So we get to know you, we spend some time here, hearing the issues of the day and then we can help, you know, get right to the point on those issues when they come up. As I said, we're all available by phone, by email, by Zoom, in person, you know, however is convenient for you all. Because of the team approach, there's always someone available. If I'm on vacation, you'll know, you'll, you'll still have my cell phone and know how to get me, but Cindy and Kevin will likely be around as well or, you know, vice versa, however it works. So that's the general, I think that's the general approach. I would also staff town meeting and you asked about that in that first question, so if I'm not jumping ahead, I'll talk about that. We, we bring counsel to every town meeting. We help prepare for town meeting by reviewing warrants articles as they're prepared on the town side and then preparing motions for the different town boards and bodies. We may provide legal opinions with respect to some of the citizens petitions that come in. We may provide advice or counsel to your finance committee or anyone else who again is authorized to use town council services if there's a particular legal question that is developed in advance. And then we'll be there at town meeting as well to answer questions as the, as the meeting progresses and goes on. We all have lots of experience doing that. We all have communities that have multiple nights of, of town meeting and so we've seen a lot of the questions that come. We work closely with moderators and, and finance committee. We also help, we've all worked on developing policies to make town meeting run more efficiently. One of the things that we've been doing with a lot of success in some of our communities that take multiple nights is establishing a consent agenda and, you know, working with the moderator on, on how to make that work and, you know, getting town meeting comfortable with the concept of a consent agenda as well. And we've been able to cut, you know, cut a night out of a multi-night town meeting by, by using that approach. So that's been, been pretty helpful. Cindy or Kevin, do you have anything to add on the town meeting front or the team approach?
Well, I, I would say on the team approach and town meeting, I can speak from experience that there are oftentimes when there are multiple nights or multiple issues or multiple potential problems that are going to arise at a town meeting. And I can say that on more than one occasion, we will team up. Karis and I specifically have teamed up on several particular town meetings so that if something comes up and one can't come, the other one's already up to speed or if it's one particular person has been dealing with an issue over time that like a zoning matter that's now coming before the town, right? So we, we can trade off and we're working cooperatively. And in all these town meetings, we've worked hand in hand. So we're very comfortable with the process and with each other and how getting things done works.
Aside from town meeting, you know, I think we've grown accustomed, you know, and you mentioned office hours, our, our boards and, and, you know, and this kind of dovetails into the second question about land use, but, you know, the ZBA, planning board, conservation commission, you know, we, we're accustomed to having council, you know, present and being available for those boards with questions. So outside of office hours, you know, would you, you know, how would you expect to, to make yourself available, you know, and especially, you know, our own staff, like our, our town manager or someone like that, you know, who has a, you know, a potential fire burning that day that needs an response?
So first of all, we attend to any meetings that you ask us to attend for any of your boards, whether it's an executive session with the select board or, you know, advice to the zoning board at a particular permitting project or affording project. We will be available in person or on Zoom depending, you know, sometimes it makes more sense for us to Zoom into a meeting and a lot of our clients are doing hybrid type meetings where they're in person and they may have presenters or others available by Zoom, so that, that is more efficient for the client. We don't have to travel and so we will definitely do that. With respect to the access, we are again, always available. We, we pride ourselves on responding to questions or issues within twenty-four hours and obviously if it's, you know, if it's something you need right away, tell us you need it right away and we'll, we'll respond. I mean, we all have our phones, we have texts, we have email. We're, we are as accessible as anybody I think can, can be in this day and age. And we're used to it. We respond to all of our clients. You know, I, I wake up in the morning sometimes and there are, you know, a bunch of texts that happened overnight or first thing in the morning and I spend a lot of time on the phone when I'm in my car. I try to use my time efficiently if I'm traveling to return calls, to make calls, to be available for calls and meetings. And I think we all take that same approach.
How many towns do you serve as council for?
I'm the principal council in Naik and then I do special council work in other communities and then I also am backup to some of our Norwood clients, although I'm not there that often. I do some special projects in Norwood. We all have a, we all have a variety of communities that we serve. And so, you know, I don't think you'll find anybody who doesn't have at least one other community that they are principally responsible for. And that's a benefit for you all because the other thing that gives us is exposure to those issues and, and concerns that somebody else may have dealt with. And that's the other good point about our team approach. We, we meet regularly as a group, we're very collaborative, we have an open office, you know, policy. We all, you know, sit near each other and talk to each other regularly. We have a huge database of documents, you know, we've, Murphy Hess has been doing this work for four years and so, you know, there are, obviously there are always new issues because of the facts are different, but there's always a lot of core issues that we have done. So we don't have to reenact the wheel. We can, you know, say Cindy, have you done or Kevin, have you done? And, you know, they're like, yes, I did this and here's a document and, you know, get us to that answer, to that quick problem that you have. Hopefully, you know, we've seen it and we can get you that answer right away.
Thank you. Second question?
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate your applying and your interest in Winchester. We spend a lot of time, energy and money on land use issues. What's your approach to land use services and kind of in particular interactions between planning board, zoning board and, you know, different boards and committees that are involved in those land use issues?
I'm going to have Cindy answer this one because she'll be the, the lead on the land use type questions.
Yeah, land use is really my passion in all of this and I do a lot of different land use things. I personally, I'm happy when my boards want me there before there's a disaster to deal with. It makes me very happy when they want me there as part of the process, when they're hearing the, the testimony, when they are asking the questions about what they're going to put in their decision or conditions. I think that's valuable. I think there's a lot of times when Zoom is helpful in those situations because you don't need to be there every minute. But I think there's a lot of times when it's more important that you actually are there, particularly as the process tends to go on and you've gone past the initial presentations from the parties and you really have this chance to sort of read your audience and read your client and your client has a chance to sort of help. What can we do or do we need this? And it's, I find that's really hard to accomplish as effectively just on Zoom. But we, I think it's really important to deal with all the different land use boards and I do. And I've, you know, I've done some work in the past as a planner. I am affordable housing council for special council in certain towns. One thing I find with my office hours has happened is that a lot of my land use boards and staff that work during the day will make appointments because I have one town that I go one day a week, they want me every day. And I find more and more it's my land use boards that are saving up their questions or coming to sit with me for twenty minutes, half an hour and bringing me the big plans, which are really hard to read on your computer screen. I mean, they're just really impossible. And sitting down and walking through projects and that is really helpful. In terms of zoning by law amendments, we've had a lot of experience in that. Most recently, we've had some very heated debates about legalizing marijuana in certain municipalities and I worked very closely with a very, very good planning board who had a very difficult task ahead of them. So we just, we roll up our sleeves, we go down and we sit down and we have meetings with our clients. We get on the phone with them whenever they want or as Kara said, we're always available by, you know, phone and email. My personal preference is either, you know, to see someone in person or to get on the phone. I find texting is a great way to say, I need you and I've got your attention and to set up when, but I think it's so much more efficient to actually go back and forth and have a dialogue because I can't practice without asking a million questions. Because my first question is, okay, this is what you're asking me, but what in my head is going is, what are you really trying to accomplish? And are you really asking me what it is you need me to do for you? So I find that more easily done when you're on the phone or in person, so.
Mariano, do you want to ask the next question?
Yeah. In what situations would you expect to bring in special council? So the town currently has independent bond council and labor council.
So we do, because we have a longstanding municipal law, public law practice, we do a lot of the things that many communities go outside for like tax title or 40B work or workers comp. We actually do that in-house. We, we also have a labor group. I know you're not looking for labor, but it helps us because we will be able to spot those labor employment issues and make sure if it comes to us, that it gets over to labor council right away. So, you know, we don't do the bond council work. We work closely with bond council, you know, in the course of town meeting and also when we're doing offerings for the community. But we really don't turn out a lot of things. We just wrapped up opioid litigation, which we did send out of house because it was just on such a massive scale. We didn't want to take that on and potentially the discovery could have been just absolutely insane, so. But we really do most of our, our work in-house. You know, the only other situation, and we can talk about that later, is if there's a conflict, then we might have to send something out, but we, you know, obviously try not to do that.
India?
Yeah, if the town was subject to litigation, who would handle that? And are there matters when you would expect to bring in outside litigation council?
And I'm going to have Kevin, one of our primary litigators, do that one.
Thank you. And by the way, it's, it's great to be here. I just wanted to express that. We're really happy to be up here in Winchester and be given the opportunity to interview for this position. We don't have a lot of towns, but the towns that we do have, we form really close bonds with, so when we have the opportunity to kind of create that relationship, we're really excited about it. So I just wanted to say that. Regarding litigation, it's all sort of driven, I think, in the first instance by who your lead attorney is. So a matter might come in, the lead attorney, which would be Karis, would look at it and having close relationships with all of her colleagues as she does, she would have in mind probably. in mind probably immediately who might be the best person to sort of take that piece of litigation and run with it. And that would be a conversation that she would then have with that attorney and say, hey, this just came in. I know that you just handled this in another municipality. Do you want to take it? And if that's the case, then Charis would then work with that attorney on the matter, but more in sort of a support position and as almost like a bit of a liaison to the, to the select board or whichever board perhaps they were working with about those matters. We do quite a bit of litigation at the firm. You know, I was sort of looking through some of my cases today. I have appearances filed in the US District Court, the Appeals Court, the Superior Court, the Land Court, District Court, the appellate tax board. I mean, we do quite a bit. So we're pretty well-equipped when litigation comes in to be able to handle it within the firm. But there are certainly times when things come in that we might not have any familiarity with or a comfort level with that appears to, you know, for not being in the client's certainly best interest for us to try to figure it out, so to speak. So for something like the opioid litigation, that's not something that we would take. It's just not what we do. So it wouldn't make any sense for us to do that. And then certainly, there are times when there might be a conflict, whether with another municipal client that we have or a client that the firm might have. And in that situation, that would certainly not be something that we handle. But I think internally, we find that matters that other municipalities might bring in special counsel for, like on a 40B matter, they might kick that out to special counsel. We people like Charis, for instance, who do an incredible amount of that work. So we're kind of in a position where we, we're on sort of the receiving end of that conversation a lot of times from firms that are looking for special counsel, will take that work on. And that puts us in a great position, I think, to service clients who have those, those issues pop up, that we can help them with those in, you know, in a direct way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the only other thing I would add in terms of litigation is sometimes it's a case that you handle yourself. Like I will do a lot of licensed security cases. Other times, if it's a big zoning case and a land court case and it's a very controversial case, like denying a marijuana license where everyone thinks it should be happened, you'll work with someone. And most recently, Kevin and I worked together on one of my cases and successfully tried and won before the land court. So we work closely with each other and we know how to do trials and how to work with each other because of all the different types of litigation we all do.
I was just going to add that when we do refer a case out, we don't just say, hey, we don't do this. You know, we help you find the right counsel. So for the opioids litigation, I sat with the select board and went through the interviews of the opioid counsel and then negotiated the fee arrangement for that representation because there were, you know, three or four different firms and they all had different fee arrangements. And they asked, you know, they wanted input as to, you know, what made the most sense, you know, whose approach made the most sense because there were two different approaches that were done. So we do provide some counseling to help you get to the right fit for the town and the approach that you want to take. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Johnny?
Sure. Could you just tell us a little bit about the type of training you provide to town committees, employees, elected officials and so forth?
Yeah, I can, I can take that. But I would just point out that specifically on that, so the Mass Municipal Association has an annual meeting where they provide training for all new select board members. Charis is the one that's going to do that presentation this year for both public records and open meeting law to all new select board members. So that's something that our firm has been doing, again, for a very long time. I'm town counsel in Milton, and I know that on a yearly basis, I want to provide a training on open meeting law, public records and ethics every year. And that, you know, that sometimes takes place, you know, with a very large group and that, you know, everybody in townwide is invited to, or it might be more specific to a smaller group like the select board. Or maybe if one board has had some struggles recently with some areas of public records or open meeting law, I might sit with them and meet with them in a, in a more specific way. I think we do a good job in the firm to staying on top of developments in the law and public records law, open meeting law, ethics specifically on a, sometimes on a monthly or even a weekly basis when new matters are decided and new agency decisions are issued. Try to understand them, kick them around within the firm, and then try to figure out the best way to send out client alerts regarding those, you know, sort of new, you know, issues or rulings or decisions or regulations or laws that affect our clients. So we try to be proactive, but I think that, and sort of act on a continuing basis. But I do think that, like, having a set yearly set of presentations to your client, which gets updated, of course, is really helpful because it kind of, it keeps everyone in that mindset that there is something new to learn each year as, you know, as you continue to serve your community and government. So I think that that's really helpful. And it also continues to kind of keep you in front of a client and maybe people that you wouldn't ordinarily see, you get to meet. So I think that's another great part of those trainings.
Thank you. So I just want to ask about, you mentioned conflicts of interest. And I think, you know, we have a good handle of how you would handle external conflicts of interest if, you know, you represent, represented a party before that has an interest in the case. But I guess I'm more interested in knowing how you would handle like an internal conflict where boards conflict or staff members conflict or select board members conflict. How, I mean, have you had those situations and what's your approach to handling those?
Yes, we definitely have had those situations. And I think that, you know, you have sort of the ethics conflict and then you have the conflict on policy decisions. And I'm assuming you're talking more about the policy decision one or both. But, so in some of my communities, there's actually a process in the bylaw for what happens when a board's, two boards conflict, or even when members of a board conflict. And I think that you, that approach makes sense. And I've utilized it in other towns. And, you know, you do have to have a conversation. And sometimes you have to have a hard conversation with people. And you have to tell them, and you have to listen, and then you have to sort of give them your best advice. And I think you have to be able to deliver that in a really straightforward way and not, and stay sort of away from the personalities and the other issues. Because ultimately, we are the counsel for the town. So we have to think about what is in the best interest of the town. You know, we may default to our appointing authority. In many cases, it's ultimately up to the select board to decide who is going to, to represent the community and if they're going to allow special counsel to represent the other board. But, you know, the best thing obviously is to try to not have a problem in the first place. And if you do, then to try to work through it and see if you can come to some sort of resolution without having to hire outside counsel. And then to really give an honest evaluation as to what the issue might be. I mean, it may, I've told clients, it's just not, you know, we'll tell clients, don't spend the time and money on this piece of litigation. You know, if you're doing it because you want to take a stand, that's one thing. But understand that your chances of winning are not great. And, you know, we have the experience and the confidence to be able to analyze those questions and to provide not just the easy answers, but the hard answers and to have those difficult conversations with our clients. They're important.
Yeah, what you're saying, along that line, I found too, that a lot of times when you get people to sit down or you talk one-on-one with the different people, more often than not, the conflict is really more of a policy disagreement or who has control of the situation. But if you really parse through most of the conflicts or apparent conflicts, there's not that many areas where a push comes to shove, jurisdiction can't be established of who ultimately gets to make the decision. But more often than not, it's, everyone has a legitimate view or voice and how to bring them together and make them, you know, gain a little from each other. And that's what I think mostly happens. I don't think we very rarely, at least I very rarely, find that it can't, that it's absolutely something that's legally at odds, conflict-wise, internally anyway.
And if it is, you know, if there is actually a legal conflict and there's a problem, you know, we'll help you work through that as well in the way that, you know, is hopefully for the best outcome of the town.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to ask the next question?
Is it efficiency? Do we want to?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you could just explain, you know, briefly, how you'll maintain efficiency with the transition process and, and given our town council's longstanding relationship with the town and understanding of previous and ongoing activities in Winchester?
Yeah. So we would want to come in and sit down and talk to your town manager and talk to the department heads, find out what the key issues are, the key pieces of litigation. I believe in our proposal, we talked about some, you know, transition time at no cost to the town. You know, really whatever we think you need, we will make ourselves available to help aid in that transition at, you know, no to minimal cost to you all. So, you know, we know that we would have to get up to speed in transition from someone who has been doing it for a while. We know the attorneys that are currently representing you. We work with them. We've transitioned projects and we've transitioned towns to them. So we all work together really well. It's a pretty small community. So I don't think there ever going to be any issues about not being able to get the information that we need. And then it's just a matter of doing it efficiently, getting up to speed. Some cases may not transition. If there's litigation at a certain stage, we may want to, you know, it may be better for the town to stay with the existing counsel. And we've done that as well, too. So we've been on both sides of that. So, you know, we work to be as efficient and cost-effective. And, you know, we will do that on our time, some of that budget on our time for you all.
Great. Mariano?
Yeah, can you describe your experience with matters related to the creation of affordable housing, including issues of RFPs for development on town owned land?
I happen to do a lot of affordable housing work, as does Charis, and I'm special counsel for an affordable housing trust. And I most recently have done recent proposals within the last couple months for town property and what they wanted to do with the RFP and how they wanted to use it. There's different types of RFPs and different types of affordable housing propositions. Like sometimes you may want to encourage rental, or you may want to encourage home ownership, or you may want to, you may have a specific goal for a particular property. Otherwise, sometimes you may want to look with a more open mind and just say, as long as there's a portable housing component, what is coming to us? So you need to kind of look at what your particular town has for housing stock, what it wants and what it's looking for and needs. And then you work closely with all the, you know, the relevant people, suspects in the community that would be creating the RFP, engineers, your planning board, your zoning people, your building inspector. And you get all the conservation commission. You get all the information you need for where a parcel might work, what might work on a parcel, what kind of size, what you might want. And then you work with them to develop a vision and to make sure that the criteria that you put out there for people to respond to is reflective of what you want. Sometimes you may, you may not care about the specifics. You just want to know, okay, it's going to go at the best price for the most units. Sometimes you might have a, you know, particular building that you want to make sure the facade is kept, or that you might want mixed use, or you might want it to be a combination of elderly, low income. So it really is dependent on what you want for the particular project and making sure the RFP is crafted to get those responses.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have any final questions?
No.
Here you go. For my members, thank you very much for all of you coming in today.
Appreciate it.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Patty, want to get Donna Brewer from Marist Harrington?
I mean, let's see if she's here.
Don't Patty want?
Hi.
Hi, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Tired of this yet?
Not yet. The night's still early. The sun's still out. Thank you all for coming in this evening. I'm Rich Mucci. I'm the chair of the select board here in Winchester with my colleagues this evening. And I thought we'd start, we do have some set questions for you that we're asking everyone. But I thought I'd give you a moment to introduce yourselves and give a little bit of an opening statement.
Thanks for the opportunity to meet with you all. I'm Donna Brewer and I'm the lead counsel. You choose our firm to be the counsel. And I'll let these gentlemen introduce themselves.
Sure. I'm Ethan Dively. I'm an associate with Marist Harrington. I would be secondary counsel after Donna and Brian.
You just introduced me almost. I'm Brian Bertram. I'd also be a backup counsel. And there you go.
And he lives in Lexington.
I live close. If you ever need me in a spur of a moment thing, I'll be there.
Tell us that.
That's taped, right? Well, thank you. So the first question we have for you this evening is, you know, if you could explain your approach to providing town council services, you know, talk to us about your daily, how you anticipate daily operations running, you know, how you see the relationship between town staff and your attorneys and the elected officials, and ways that you'll ensure that, you know, it's a cost-effective approach providing the services to the town.
Sure. So I would be the lead counsel. I would be the primary contact. However, for any reason, you can't reach me, but I will tell you that we give everybody our cell phone numbers as well as our direct dial numbers in the office and emails. So these two gentlemen are available if, for any reason I'm not. And we pride ourselves on responsiveness. So we're going to get back to you with some kind of response within 24 hours of getting an email. We will return your calls the same day. If we hear that something's an emergency, you're going to hear back from us right away, whether it's me or whether it's Ethan or whether it's Brian. That's, that's what we do. We each would be aware of what is going on in Winchester. We work collaboratively in our office so that anything going on in Winchester, all three of us are going to know it. Not all of us will be working on it. It would depend on what the particular issue is, but we're all going to know who's working on it and what the status of the matter is. So you should be able to find out anything from any of us. But again, just for consistency sake, you would try and meet first to find out what you need in the way of advice.
And, you know, in Winchester, we've come accustomed to, you know, having a town council be accessible to our boards, you know, planning boards, zoning board come to mind, but, you know, generally all our boards. I mean, how, how would you propose, you know, making yourself available to those types of boards?
We follow the lead of the town, how you would like to make us available. So we would attend board meetings if you ask us to be there. We will also respond to any board's questions or legal advice they might be looking for. Typically, though, our towns will have legal questions go through the town manager or the town administrator in order to control the access to town, town council services, as well as just knowing what boards are up to. So typically, what happens with our clients is that a board, if it needs legal advice, will ask the department, the board chair, to contact the town manager or the town administrator and ask the question, get permission to ask the question to town counsel. And Brian, did you want to pick up on that since you have dealt with that?
Yeah, I have.
About the same size?
So I'm lead counsel in a couple of our other towns. And I know that one of them has just that kind of system where the town, town manager in that town sort of has a system where you actually fill out an online form and it goes through him. But, you know, generally, he approves it. But that way, he knows what's going on. So he has sort of a window into what, what matters we're working on, what the legal spend is, sort of that kind of management oversight. And it still makes sure that we're accessible. And, you know, we would go out upon a request, talk with the chair, whoever else it is, get sort of a sense of it. And I think we're always, you know, sort of tuned into the fact that, you know, there's sort of an expectation when the request comes in and it gets forward to us, sort of the size of the matter or what it might be. But it doesn't always prove to be that our expectations bear out. It may be something quite different. So, you know, at that point, we would check back in and just make sure that whoever the principals are know what's going on. You know, every town is a little bit different. I think that's one of the things that we try to do really early on when we engage with the town, is to sort of figure out what your processes are and adapt to those rather than vice versa. Because at the end of the day, you know, our goal number one is to give you excellent client service and excellent legal advice. And those two things shouldn't be mutually exclusive. And so on the client service standpoint, it really is a question of us adapting to you.
Could you talk a little bit about, you know, who would be accessible for town meeting, you know, who would be present, who would prepare, advise, you know, town meeting articles, policies, procedures? I mean, there's a lot of, we have a multi-night town meeting here, an elected town meeting. So it's a cherished process in this town. So I think, it depends who you talk to. But, you know, it's a cherished process.
You're not alone in that. And, you know, quite frankly, sometimes there can be conflicts. If everybody picks the first Monday in May, you know, there will be a problem. Luckily, that's not a problem as much for our firm as it might be for others, because we have 13 lawyers in our firm who all do municipal law, and we all are available to do town meetings. Each of us sitting here has done town meetings, and that's true with everybody in our firm. So, in the first instance, I would be the one who would be there for town meeting. If there is for some reason a conflict and I can't be there, you're not going to be left with inexperienced counsel. As for what we will do for motions, warrants, again, it's what your practice has been. For some of the towns I've represented, one of them, I drafted the entire warrant and all of the motions. It basically was just fed the topics from my client to draft into the warrant. Some of our clients, we don't see the warrants until a couple of days before it's going to be posted, and it's already been closed. So, it really depends on the practice, but Ethan can talk about, a little bit about his experience with town meetings, as he is the one who's been supporting those of us who will be the main town council, and he's been backup and feeds us all the information we need to give you proper legal advice during the meeting in real time.
Sure. So, I think that's one of the important things about how we approach town meeting, is your lead counsel will always be there barring an unforeseen conflict, but we will always have a backup also present at town meeting at no cost to the town. And we've always found that to be an important resource, because sort of coming up with answers to complicated questions on the fly doesn't always bear the best results. And so, having someone else in a second chair to answer those questions, just like you would have at a trial in a lawsuit, has always produced very excellent results for our clients.
Thank you. Mike, you want to ask a second question?
Sure. And thank you for coming in and your interest in Winchester and applying. We invest a lot of time, energy and resources in land use, as I'm sure you see that with a lot of your municipal clients. Could you explain your approach and include expected interactions with planning board, zoning board of appeals, and any other kind of role in those hearings and with other boards and commissions as well?
Sure. And I got to say, it was interesting going by Waterfield on the way here, so we caught up a little bit of that. But I'll let Ethan speak to this, because he's our expert on this stuff.
Right. So, I would be your go-to point of contact for all things land use. I come from a two-year clerkship with the land court, where these were sort of part and parcel of my life for two years. And in my tenure subsequently with the firm, I have advised all of our communities on pretty much every aspect of land use you can imagine. Everything from drafting and revising zoning bylaws, getting those through the town meeting process, to providing sort of off-the-cuff advice to our land use boards, planning boards, zoning boards. And that takes, that takes a couple of forms and varies a little bit depending on sort of how independent your planning staff is and sort of the level of responsiveness that they're looking for from town council. And so, I guess what I mean by that is not every project that comes through a town and needs permitting is something that planning staff is going to need town council for, right? So, we don't think it's a one-size-fits-all, but our responsiveness is really the key to our support for your, for your planning and zoning departments, because when something is going to be complicated or is going to require multi-night hearings or sort of in-depth analysis so that your boards are prepared for the questions that they will be asked or the questions that they will need to ask, we are sure to provide clear and concise advice ahead of meetings. And then, of course, we would be available absolutely anytime our presence is requested. That would either be me, or in our, in our firm, our partner Chris Heap also has extensive background in land use permitting, all aspects of it, from 40B to smart growth, 40R districts, affordable housing. No matter, no matter what the ask is, you would have either me or someone just as competent present for the hearings.
Thank you. So, along those lines, Ethan, you know, we've grown accustomed in Winchester to having, you know, counsel present at many of our planning board hearings or ZBA hearings. You seem to have, you know, a lot of permits or issues at the ZBA level. So, you know, is that something that we could expect you to attend and advise those boards on a regular basis, or how do you typically operate in the towns that you service land council to in those matters?
Sure. So, generally, we appear as requested. And so, if that was every session of your planning board or zoning board, we would plan to have somebody there. Alternatively, if not every session requires that, then we're not going to insert ourselves where council fees aren't required. So, I think certainly if that's what you're accustomed to, you would, you would get continuity with that through us.
We have found it helpful for Ethan or Chris to attend all of the hearings on the matters that you know are more complicated from the beginning, such as 40Bs, one that may not be a friendly 40B. And so, those hearings will have counsel there all the time, and then Ethan or Chris drafts the decision of the board, and if it goes to litigation, any of us can handle that.
Thank you. Maria, you want to ask the next question?
Yeah. So, this is question three that was submitted. In what situation would you expect to bring in outside special counsel? And the town currently does have independent labor and bond counsel.
Do you want to speak to that, Brian?
Yeah. I think those are the two main ones where, you know, we can, we can handle labor, but if you've had outside labor counsel, that's great. I think everybody has outside bond counsel, and we all work extensively with bond counsel come town meeting time. You know, I have a hard time thinking of anything else, to be honest. We have quite a breadth of experience at the firm, and I think, you know, one of the interesting things about this firm, myself included, is that some of us don't come from what you may call a traditional municipal law background. We have varied backgrounds. I actually used to be an Assistant Attorney General with the Commonwealth, and prior to that, I worked at a large law firm in Boston. So, we have other people who worked for the Department of Public Health at the Commonwealth, different places, different experiences. And so, you know, when we run into things that may not be as common in town from a litigation perspective, we typically have that experience in-house. You know, I can't say universally for certain, we may never run into something, and of course, you know, we're familiar with many lawyers who deal with things. And there may be a situation where there's a conflict, although, you know, on that front, you know, our firm really does municipal law and very little else. We may have a few private clients, never developers, and so even, you know, the instances where we run into conflicts are relatively rare. So, I don't think it will happen often. If it does, it will probably be a unique one-off, at which point we would help you to find somebody who's suited to the issue, who hopefully charges reasonable rates, and someone you're comfortable with.
I will say, just to pick up on that, that if you're happy to work for labor counsel, I would not recommend that you change. I will say, however, that I am labor counsel for two towns, and we have now three lawyers who are quite experienced in our firm on labor and employment issues. So, if you want to consolidate, which might make sense for just keeping all of the matters that you can together with one firm, we can certainly give you that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ethel?
I believe you briefly alluded to this in the last answer, but if the town was subject to litigation, who would handle this? And are there matters where you would expect to bring in any outside litigation counsel?
I do not think we would ever bring in outside litigation counsel. The only time you would get somebody other than us to litigate a matter, either on the plaintiff's side or the defense's side, would be when you have insurance defense counsel. But each of us here is currently involved in representing clients, some of our towns in litigation, seeking preliminary injunctive relief for zoning violations. What else are we doing? We've, Brian had an interesting litigation involved in water rights, so we run the gamut of things that we will do for litigation. I started out as a litigator 40 years ago. And so, there is quite a depth of litigation experience that we can bring to you. We're not looking for you to need to hire anybody else.
Yeah. I would add to that, too, that, you know, when we say litigation, we often think courts, but I think that it's a little bit of a broader reach, particularly for municipalities who are often regulated by the Commonwealth. Administrative proceedings, things of that nature, that sort of counts, too. And, you know, I've done work before any number of state entities, whether it be the Energy Facility Siting Board, the Department of Public Utilities, the Department of Environmental Protection. Actually, I used to represent many of these agencies when I was an Assistant Attorney General. So, I'm sort of familiar with them, both in representing them and now in representing municipal interests. So, I really do think that we have a breadth of experience that sort of differentiates us a little bit.
Yeah. And not to spend too much time on land use, but I have certainly plenty of litigation experience in Superior Court and in Land Court dealing with all of the myriad possible appeals you could get in land use, planning, conservation commissions. So, there would be plenty of coverage for those more frequent issues.
Thank you. John, you want to ask the next question?
Sure. What kind of training can we look to you to provide to town staff and elected officials, whether it's about open meeting laws, whatever that is? And is there a format you follow, spring and fall, or how does it work?
Sure. Have you seen? So, I think typically, we offer at least one training of absolutely no cost to the town on a topic of your choice. Certainly, that includes things like the open meeting law, public records law, ethics, all of those sorts of nuts and bolts type of things. We've prepared one recently for one of our clients, just on how to hold an efficient open public meeting. And that's sort of something that was requested, but was easily developed and certainly helpful. So, I think generally, we sort of leave it to you to let us know how we can best assist you. But we can certainly give you suggestions if there are areas that you guys think you could use some help.
And beyond just the initial training that we offer at no cost, which could be all of those topics, as well as we've done training on sexual harassment and discrimination and how to do an investigation, all sorts of things. One of the things we do is, that's a little unusual, is we publish a monthly newsletter that we distribute beyond just our clients, but it will highlight developments in municipal law that your staff and you would be interested in. Just a recent, a recent case involved the residents of an elected official, and whether they had to live in the town in order to get elected in that town. And that might be the kind of thing you might be interested in reading about. So, we do try to provide ongoing training, ongoing education, that a lot of, actually, I don't know very many other firms at all, whether they do municipal law or not, that give that service to their clients.
Thank you.
You mentioned conflicts of interest, and I think we all understand external conflicts and how those can arise, but I guess my question focuses on internal conflicts, where, you know, two boards could be in conflict, or staff members, or even, you know, members of one board. Have you seen those issues and how do you, what's your approach to dealing with those types of internal conflicts?
Brian, you're dealing with this now, right?
Yeah. We do see these issues. We hope we don't see them that frequently, but we do see them. I think the best advice I can give with those is to, you try to work it out internally first. You know, you try to keep things in the family. It's, it's never advantageous to a town when that kind of conflict spills out into the open, but, you know, you may have it, at which point, you know, you have to, I mean, look, we represent the town. That is our, that is our charge. We don't represent any individuals in the town. And so, if an individual has a conflict with something that the town is doing, then we represent the town, and, you know, where appropriate, we may advise them of that, help them, you know, find their own counsel, and make sure that we take care of that from an ethical and simply sort of a responsible standpoint. You know, it's not an extraordinary thing for boards or officials, and there are official capacities to disagree or to sort of have conflicts over who can do what. And again, we try to deal with that in-house, but, you know, typically you look to the charter or the bylaws as to who takes the lead there. You know, I can tell you that, you know, you can't avoid them. You know, even when I was an Assistant Attorney, it was a little messy when I was Assistant Attorney General, because we had many elected officials who could clash, so I think it's a little better at the municipal level. But it's still there, and it's certainly a concern. But I think at the end of the day, the most important thing when we approach that sort of has to derive from our past work. You know, we need to be a trusted advisor in town to everybody, and everybody needs to understand that we're sort of a fair broker and a responsible party, so that when we have to deal with those issues, while people may disagree with others, they may not like the decision, they may disagree with us, at the very least, they can trust that it's an impartial decision, that it's in the town's best interests, because again, we represent the town, and that they understand that it's a professional sort of fair decision. I don't know if you want to add to that, Donna, or if that sort of covers it?
I think it covers it.
All right. Thank you. Mike, you want to ask the next question?
Yeah. Could you please explain how your firm will maintain efficiency for Winchester, both long-term and during the transition process, given the town council's longstanding relationship with the town and understanding of previous and ongoing activities in Winchester?
So, we have experience with coming into towns to become town council after, prior town council has been there for a long time. So, it is a process we're familiar with. We actually know your current town council, and we have an excellent relationship with them, the lawyers in their firm. I don't think there'd be any issue at all. One thing I will say about the municipal bar is that we are quite legal. So, although you're interviewing five firms, we know people at all five firms, and we get along with them. So, I don't think that there's any issue with transitioning in that regard. We would expect the full support of the current town council if you decide to change over to us. I wouldn't think that would be a problem. Long-term, where you get the efficiency is what I call our sweet spot. We have 13 lawyers right now dedicated to municipal law, right now we have 13 towns that we are town council for. That is not so many that you're going to be getting cookie cutter answers, generic answers. We're going to give you individual advice that is tailored to what you need. On the other hand, because we do just municipal law, you're going to get the efficiencies of our experience. So, everybody here can answer the most basic questions about open meeting law, public records, and at the same time, you're not going to feel like you're just getting some rote answer that isn't focused on you.
Yeah. And I guess a comment as to the transition process, I think our practice would be to come in, meet with the town manager, meet with all of your department heads, sort of do a listening tour to get a feel for exactly how each of your departments run, what their legal needs are, where they may have been over-underserved previously, so that we have a really comprehensive understanding of what we could best do to provide competent legal services to Winchester. And sort of getting in the door in that manner helps us from square one to ensure that our services are as efficient as possible, so that we know exactly what you need before we get started. Certainly, there would be some getting up to speed as a transition would occur, and that would be at no or minimal cost to you. We're not going to be charged for our time to get up to speed on existing pending matters.
Yeah. And I think, I guess, just to add from personal experience, I just transitioned to town that had town council for 30 years. You know, we got appointed, of course, in the middle of December, right before the holidays, with an acting town administrator in place and out looking for a new one. And so, I think, just as practical advice, you know, I looked at Ms. Rudolph, we'll, you know, should you hire us, we will be best friends very quickly, because that really is sort of the lead. I think one of the most important things coming in is, okay, we need a list. We need a list of what are the open matters and what's the priority on them, because, you know, one of the biggest risks whenever you transition from longstanding town council is that you don't drop a ball somewhere. And so, that would be sort of the immediate concern. You know, followed then by, okay, what are the other priorities, and how do we sort of integrate that with the listening tour that Ethan just said? Because we want to be efficient when dealing with the rest of the staff and the boards, while at the same time, you know, making sure that, you know, we know where to go for things, we're making sure that legal spend again, which can really, you know, be an issue when you're, we're first starting out, is under control, it's expected, and that, you know, everybody sort of knows where we are, that we're available. And then, you know, continue to communicate on that. Priorities change, you know, again, you don't want to drop a ball.
And to add in, when we transfer
you know, everybody sort of knows where we are, that we're available. And then, you know, continue to communicate on that. Priorities change, you know, again, you don't want to drop a ball.
To that end, when we transferred to Brian's new town, they gave us six pending lawsuits, two of which I'm hearing is scheduled the next week. And we did it. We covered it.
Thank you. Mariana?
Yeah, so what's your experience with the creation of affordable housing and drafting RFPs, especially for development of town?
Sure, yes, we've certainly done that. I've drafted declarations of trust for Affordable Housing Trust. We've worked through, which I know you guys already have. In fact, I was really impressed with the number of housing organizations that you have, between the Housing Authority, the Housing Partnership Committee? Is that what it was?
Board, yeah.
The Board, the Affordable Housing Trust, and then there was a coalition, a housing coalition. So that was very impressive, that you've already got that structure in place for it. So we have done long-term leases for town land. In fact, I'm working on some litigation out of some of that for affordable housing, where a nonprofit came in and has put up the affordable housing, and we're dealing with issues out of failing to do it properly. But we've also done sales, where the property was sold for less than market, in order to pick somebody who would agree to a certain amount of affordable housing. So we've run the gamut for that, we've done the RFPs for that. Jenny Merrill in our office does all of our procurement work, and so she has done many, many RFPs for affordable housing, construction of affordable housing, and then we pick up the slack when it goes to litigation. Did you want to add anything, Ethan, or did you think that covered it?
No, I think that covered it, and I guess what I would say is the breadth of our experience in this area, including unfortunately, litigation involving one of our communities, really gives us a deep understanding of how best to work with the community of nonprofits that sort of generally tend to step in and help develop these projects, and so that we can work with them well to shepherd a project that is going to, from start to finish, be efficient, and then when it is complete, actually be complete and serve its role, rather than ending up in litigation.
To that end, one of the things I'm going to do tomorrow is be one of three municipal lawyers who are going to be on a phone call with Secretary Camille and DHCD over the new Section 3A, which doesn't have an affordable component to it, as you know, but it does require multifamily units to be in a new district in a certain amount of density, which is rather high for Winchester, as well as mischaracterizing where you should be, misclassifying you as a bus community instead of a commuter rail community. You'll be pleased to know we'll be bringing that up tomorrow, probably, with the guidelines, along with the fact that there isn't an affordable component in there, which seems to be counterintuitive. If you're going to be encouraging housing for citizens in this Commonwealth, we have to recognize that too many of them are getting priced out. So if you're going to encourage such density of a minimum of 15 units per acre, then maybe you should put in an affordable component so that it can get to more citizens. We'll see how that turns out tomorrow.
We appreciate your advocacy already.
Give an hour with them.
That's going to be a fast hour. Any final questions from any members? I just had one. How long have you all been at the firm?
I've been at the firm for eight years.
I've been at the firm for three years.
Pandemic time. I think it's close to five years now. It feels like time sort of went into a time warp there for a few years.
I hear you. Well, thank you very much for coming in this evening. It was very nice to meet all of you, and thank you for answering our questions.
Pleasure's all ours. It was very nice meeting you.
Take care.
I think next up, we have KP Law, Lauren Goldberg, and George Pucci.
Do you know if it's in July? I like it, I just, you know, it's fun, but, right? It's not... Okay. Yep. Now the crazy is... I get this. Right, they do. Yeah, no, that's great. They have the whole aisle.
Hi. Come on in. Have a seat. Get one more chair. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I'm Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board and with all my colleagues this evening. Appreciate you all coming in this evening. I know, I think we have two firms here, rather than just one with this proposal. So I'll give you a moment to introduce yourselves and explain a little bit how you see this relationship working.
Sure. So my name is Lauren Goldberg, and I'm the Managing Attorney at KP Law. I've been there for about 20 years. We have a firm that has about 45 lawyers at any one moment, and each lawyer is a municipal lawyer, but also has an area of expertise that they enjoy practicing in and focus their practice on. In my case, it's elections. I work for the State Secretary of State's Office, and then for, I mean, for the Public Records Division, and then for the Elections Division. So I've been doing this work my entire career, and obviously, what I learned at the state transitioned very well to the private practice of municipal law. The way that kind of our firm works is that you'd have a primary contact, which would be me, a backup contact, which would be George Pucci, and then you'd have your land use contacts as well, and obviously, you know, Jonathan Silverstein and Mark Bobrowski. We've worked together for a long time. We consult on things like land use warrant articles and town meeting, quantum of vote and all of those things, so we're very used to working together. And Mark also shares many of the cases that we work with. We interact with Mark. So our firms get along very well, and just as people, we get along very well. And as I said, actually, in my cover letter, we're excited to have the opportunity to work with Jonathan in this new kind of circumstance. So again, like, one of the most important things is, for us, you don't have to know anyone's name but your team. We will ensure that you get what you need. We can bring in whoever it is that is the appropriate person. If there's a need for a specialist, let's say an election lawyer, you know, we would do that. So, you know, we truly practice the broadest range of municipal law in the state, and obviously, we have an exceptional amount of experience at the firm and enjoy working with new towns. Jonathan, do you have?
Yeah, yeah, I'll jump in. So as you may know, until March, and for 26 years, I was at KP Law. So Lauren and I have worked together for decades, and George, and everyone there. I love the firm, I love the people. I left primarily for two reasons. I really wanted to focus my practice on land use, which, and exclusively practice land use, which isn't the way that the firm operates. I also wanted to give up my commute to Boston, and so now I'm commuting from Lexington to Concord, which has worked out much better. And I'm enjoying working with Mark, who I know you all know, but my reason for leaving KP Law had nothing, it was actually a very difficult decision, even though it made complete sense for me. It was difficult because of my love for the people at the firm. My wife and Lauren are friends, I'm friends with Lauren's husband, we socialize, we value each other as people. This is not a situation where there are two firms that are competitors. We work collaboratively all the time. I'm land use council in the town of Tisbury, where KP Law is town council. This wouldn't be a new thing for us. And in fact, I was joking with Lauren about it the other day when I saw her. It really wouldn't be any different from what we've been doing the past several years, where we've been practicing from home, and if she gets a land use issue in one of her towns, she calls me up and says, hey, can you handle this land use case? It's just that I'm at a different firm now. That's the only difference. So in terms of logistics, in terms of seamless provision of legal services, I can very confidently tell you it wouldn't make a difference, and we're already doing it. We have a model, Tisbury, Medford, New Bedford, Everett. We work together in all these communities right now.
Just initially, you kind of touched on this, but, you know, who could we expect to be our daily contacts at KP Law?
You're looking at them. It would be me and George, and George in the areas that George, you know, would take over. So George is a litigator, any kind of litigation, George would handle that. George is in court, I'm in the office, or the other way around. So you'll always have somebody that you can reach. You'd have our cell phones and everything, but you would expect to see me at town meeting and me at board meetings. Again, because of the expertise that we have, you don't want me doing conservation commission work, but Amy Quessel and Alex Wisehide of our office are experts in that area, and they work with conservation commissions throughout the state. So for that, I would coordinate that, put everybody in touch, and oversee the legal work on our end, but also be available to the board or the commission to kind of talk strategy and, you know, big picture stuff, and not so much the particular regulations. But that's how, that's how kind of the firm uses the experience that we have to your advantage, and it doesn't make sense for any of us to try to, you know, redevelop a, you know, a public hearing process, you know, when you have a public hearing process and it's your process, you know, that's not our, that's not our job. We're not looking to, you know, interfere with existing policies and procedures. We're happy to look at them, but that's, you know, we really don't see that as our role. You're the policymakers, you make the decisions, and we provide you with the information you need for good decision-making.
Go ahead, Drew.
Good evening again. I'm George Pucci. Good time for me to just jump in and just introduce myself along with Lauren. It's actually an honor for me to be here with Jonathan and Mark Bobrowski. I've always considered Mark a luminary in the field of land use law. In fact, I've been practicing for more than 32 years. I started out as a litigator doing the insurance defense litigation, and we had professional liability insurance where we represented attorneys who were sued for malpractice. And at the time I was doing that, I had the good fortune to meet a lot of real estate lawyers and land use practitioners, and I just liked the way they practiced, like their sort of intellectual background and how they work legal, and it got me interested in that area of the law. So early on, I've been at KP Law since 2000, so I immediately started to switch over to land use litigation as opposed to insurance defense litigation. That's when I first saw, I've never even really known Mark, but back in the day, I used to go to seminars that Mark Bobrowski would give, and I was always extremely impressed with his presentation, so that's just a little personal plug that I have, is, you know, it's an honor really for me to be here tonight. In terms of KP Law and your principal contact, you know, Lauren is the municipal practitioner, so you would want her as your principal contact for anything related to general municipal law, as you said, elections, your town meeting, day-to-day questions that come up. The approach we take is very team-based, though, at KP Law. So what we wanted to make sure is you've got the A-team that we proposed to Winchester, that we want to make sure that your principal contact is our best municipal practitioner, who also happens to be our managing partner, and that's Lauren. And then, from there, we talk about just very good practice of law. And working at KP Law now for, you know, 23 years, I've become much more of a municipal practitioner than use law, general municipal, risk management decisions that municipalities have to make. And I'm big on client responsiveness. So if Lauren happens to not be available to take that first call, that, we thought it would be a very good idea to have me as a backup for a community like this. But if you need to get somebody on the phone, you're going to be able to get Lauren and me in that process. Frankly, some of the questions that you would ask me if you got me first instead of Lauren, I might go to Lauren. I might send Lauren a text and say, Lauren, here's the question, and Lauren will give me an immediate answer to get back to you. So the main thing on general municipal contact, we want to make sure you have the A-team, and we wanted to make sure that you have somebody at a senior level that knows about getting back to clients. So if you need us, you will get us. And frankly, I have a very busy litigation practice, but I'm the type of lawyer that you call my cell phone if I'm in the middle of a trial. When I take a five-minute break during the trial, I will call you from the hallway. I mean, it is that important to make sure how responsible we are, timeliness in terms of client contact. And, you know, this practice for 23 years of municipalities, it's like being corporate counsel, really. And when you need to get somebody, you need to get somebody, you need that answer. A lot of times, you'll have somebody in your office, you know, looking for an answer, or somebody in one of the departments that needs an answer right away. So really, that was how we kind of thought about the best way of presenting this proposal to you, to make sure you get the best and make sure that you get the quickest responsiveness.
So, no, I appreciate that. So, you know, just dovetailing on that, you know, how do you propose to make your services available to town boards and staff outside the town manager's office in a cost-effective manner? And I know there's a cross-section between the two firms and the different boards that we have here, so I was just curious what you would propose would be the best way to do that.
Well, the way that we like to practice is to be in touch with each other, to communicate with each other. If the planning board needs something, and talk to Jonathan, let's say, and then said, oh, we have open meeting law issues, we really want someone to come in and help with that, he would call me. And same thing if it was the other way, if I'm dealing with a board and they need some land use advice, it would just get referred. Again, that is what we do in our office right now, and what we have been doing in these several communities during the past few months, but we do that every day with all of our clients. So it is a comfortable role that we are able to say, okay, this is best dealt with by expert X, and I'm going to bring them in and get them up to speed and introduce them to the town manager, and, you know, make sure that they're coming to the table knowing what's going on in town. And it works very well. You know, I think we do a terrific job of making sure that you are getting the benefit of all of our prior experience. We don't, again, COVID-19 is a perfect example of the kinds of work that we do, because during COVID, there was unemployment questions, and there was election questions, there were town meeting issues, there were open meeting law issues, all of that stuff going on, and we had a group that was analyzing all the different pieces, and I don't know if you were able to look at our website, but we sent out an e-update, which is what we call our newsletter, almost every day during the beginning of COVID, and we posted them online as well, so that any community could use them. Again, had we not had all of those different people with expertise in those areas, I think it would have been a lot more difficult for us to provide that kind of service, and especially, I shouldn't have neglected the Board of Health. That was another area where, you know, we have environmental lawyers, we have lawyers that deal with Title V, and they were able to really kind of work with the Boards of Health to explain their jurisdiction, to help explain that to the other boards and committees in town, and to the managers and administrators. And so, again, I think the group of people that we can rely on, you know, our bench is fantastic, and, you know, I think one of the things that Jonathan said about the firm is that everybody, and George said it, too, everybody is a team player. So, you know, the town of Winchester is not my town, or George's town, or Jonathan's town. That's not how we do it. It's a client of the firm, and I think that really gives us a wonderful perspective on what we're doing. We're not arguing about who, you know, gets a piece of what or any of that. We don't have that. So we really are 100%, well, I'd say 95% dedicated to public sector law and that team approach, and we don't require outside help really with anything. You know, we have labor, we have... You know, we have labor, we have, you know, we have land use, we have contracts and procurement. We have all the people that we would need to handle high-level crises. And so, you know, there are times when we're brought in as outside counsel for things like elections or, you know, running a recount, something like that. But we don't typically have to rely on outside counsel for anything. I think the one area that we, you know, we don't have a statewide expert in is the special education law. And that's a very, very tiny area of law that has a huge impact. We don't have someone that specializes in that. But other than that, as I said, you know, we don't anticipate needing to rely on outside counsel. And one of the things that's actually terrific about that is, you know, if Jonathan's litigating something in a land use context, we know, you know, collectively, we know, okay, this is how it needs to get funded, this is what the municipal finance implications are, these are the potential risks. And, you know, there's a lot of times we see towns that say, we know we might not win this case, but it matters to us and we're going to do it, you know? And we are 100% zealous advocates, you know, but we want you to have the information ahead of time. So, you know, I do think that having that expertise reduces the chance that you'll need to spend money, but it also enhances the service that you'll get because you have the land use side, you have the municipal finance side, you have the open meeting side, you have a, you know, if there was a need, a collective bargaining side. So you have all of those pieces available. And as I said, I would, I would organize that part for the firm.
I think as far as the handoff between the land use side and the general municipal side, we've already done it. I did it for 10 or 12 years, I don't remember how long, with Wade. And he basically turned over the land use stuff to me. It was a good experience for both of us. I think he picked up some land use tips and I picked up some general tips. So I don't see anything wrong with that system. And Jonathan and I will decide how to parse the work out once it comes over to Concord, where our office is located. And we have two other lawyers that work with us daily on land use. One is a young associate, so there's an opportunity to cut the bill a little bit there. The other one is the son of your former building inspector, Paul Haverty, is a partner at the law firm. And his dad was inspector here before Al. So I worked well, I thought, with your boards, the planning board, the building department and the ZBA. I, you know, it's memory lane driving into town. I'm driving past the Winchester Hospital Oncology Center. I showed Jonathan the Pencey patch and he tried to figure out what Arc done stood for. So it's-
He made sure to stop at Mahoney's, turn around.
In Mahoney's so that he could see it straight away. But they were meaningful projects to me. I thoroughly enjoyed working with you before, and I hope we get the opportunity to do it again.
So Lauren, there's no question that you have a very deep bench and so forth. We'd like our counsel to know us, and you're very busy. How are you going to find the time to get to know the town's personality and what our specific needs are? Because 100 of the 25 towns, they're great, nice place to visit, but I care about Winchester.
Well, I anticipated that you would ask that question. I mean, the first thing is, the firm represents that many municipalities, not me. I'm called on to go to particular things to help with particular issues. So the towns where I am the lead attorney, I work very well with the manager and we get to know each other. We, I go to board meetings, I go to town meeting, I go to department head meetings. So I would, I would definitely be able to do all of those things. It doesn't mean that my, you know, that, that, that my kind of involvement in other places is a 24/7 kind of thing. And they have teams as well. So they know, if they can't reach me, they know who to go to. And, you know, we actually, we have on our proposal also the, a woman named Devon Braun. And Devon is a fantastic associate. She was a court, I'm sorry, a clerk for the Supreme Judicial Court. She is on everything. And we really, I really use her to kind of help me stay up to date with stuff. And we have spreadsheets and we, you know, we follow the things that we need to in the towns where I'm, where I'm the lead. So the idea isn't that I will be doing your conservation work, but I would be present in general. And I have relationships, I've worked in Weston for years and Dedham and, blanking.
I think, I think one that's really relevant, well, Weston certainly is. Nantucket is one that, not that we have a B-team, but when I say A-teamers, you know, some of the, some of the client, you'd actually be surprised. Some municipalities, you look at them and you say, you may have a feeling, you know, first conclusion bias about the type of government they have. And then other towns, you might think less highly of them. And it turns out they have an unbelievably great government. So it's really funny the way it varies from the state. But in communities that are somewhat analogous to this, and I, I'm an Eastern Mass guy. I grew up in Milton, I know the cities and towns of Massachusetts. I'm a policeman's son, and I've always admired Winchester and towns like it. And, you know, this is something that is dear to our heart. When we have a community like a Winchester or a Nantucket or Weston, great effort has been put into historically into how those towns got to be the towns that they are. Either their proximity in terms of commuting to Boston, the professionals that live there, the quality of the government. In these situations, we, we know our towns. Whatever team, if you have a specialized issue, we're going to send that to a specialized person. But overall, when we're dealing day-to-day hopefully for Winchester, our team will know Winchester. And we're also very cognizant, very careful at KP Law. With our experience dealing with municipal boards, especially select boards, the executive body, you know, we're very careful to represent the board as a board. We like to, you know, we want to make sure that we're representing the board. We're not playing favors, we're not having personal relationships. We have, our relationships are very friendly, our clients are like our family. But we don't kick out select board member Fallon, that's our buddy and we'll, you know.
That was your biggest mistake.
We deal with them as the board. You know, and these are, so that, and we know our board, so we-
Can I just jump in for one second? So your bylaws, your charter, different than anyone else's. I read through the charter today, I noticed all these things. I'm like, wow, they have that in there? I'm usually the one who adds that. You know, those phrases, or many of them, appear in other places. But that means nothing about what it is and the way that you all govern. And I do, I say this, I do a lot of training for new associates, as you might imagine. And I say to them, there is no town that is the same as another town. And if you go in with that attitude, you will never be able to answer a question because everything requires that you know the governing documents, the history. And, you know, one of the things that I really enjoy, obviously I've been doing this job for a long time, is working with new towns because that gives me an opportunity to, you know, have different experiences. In terms of lawyers and hours and all that kind of thing, I think most lawyers that I know do balance multiple clients unless they're in-house counsel. And even then, there's different constituencies. So some of the towns that we have are tiny and they only ask for help once in a while. And others are more kind of proactive and work with counsel more specifically. And we're available to provide the kind of counsel that you want, the kind of counsel that you need. It doesn't mean that if we notice something, and I said earlier, we're not here to remake things, but if, for example, I notice something in your charter, I might say to you, hey, next time you guys do a charter review, you should be thinking about X. That's what builds a relationship. And as I said, I have, you know, long-term clients that, as George would say, I'm not, I don't pick favorites, but they have a relationship with me. And if I'm not going to go to town meeting or, you know, if something comes up and I can't go to a meeting, you know, sick kid or whatever it might be, you know, they know that their backup is available. I will bring them up to date, and for you, it should be seamless. But my presence would be, you know, a specific intent. I would do that with specific intent. And actually, I do office hours in a couple of towns, just for a couple hours, one morning a week. And that's another thing that's worked out pretty nicely in terms of getting to know towns. Also, those department head meetings are fantastic because you really get to hear what everyone's dealing with and what's going on. That's the, that's the fun part for us.
Thank you.
Lauren, how many-
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just really quickly, I know this was Lauren's question, but I can speak to her because I've seen her work for 20 years. She's not going to take on something that she can't do to the highest quality. I've seen it and I've seen her work ethic. She doesn't drop the ball. And if you were to talk to someone in Weston about their relationship with Lauren, you'll get a sense of the relationship that she would have with you. So I just wanted to throw that in.
But all the members of the team will have that knowledge about the boards, how boards get along, department heads, departments, you know, the customary practices of that municipality. So that, as I said, certain specialized things will be assigned under our supervision. But the team that you're dealing with for Winchester will know your town and will know the people involved.
Great, thank you.
Lauren, how many towns right now are you currently primary attorney for?
Well, I am active in about four towns on a regular, everyday basis. And that's Weston, Dedham, Walpole and Amherst. Again, a lot of the work that they are doing isn't work that I typically do on the day-to-day. I'm involved in the town meeting process, I'm involved in, you know, interpreting new laws, helping them interpret their charter and their bylaws, helping them write legislation, coming up with, you know, ways to deal with emergencies. And so that's the kind of thing that I'm doing every day. Every once in a while, there will be a town that is especially, I think the word is needy in that they're going to, they have a trial, you know, there's a, there's a court case. I wound up doing a court case in Salem as special counsel. It was supposed to be a one-day thing, it was 11 days. I, you know, I didn't know that that was going to happen, but my clients were fine. I let them know, I'm in court during the day. If you want to reach me, leave me a text or a voicemail. And at the end of the day, on my drive home, I'm going to call you back. And if it's something you need right now, call the backup person and they will make sure that it gets done. So.
I think you've touched on a lot of our questions a little bit that we sent you ahead of time. I've been just open it up to the board members, you know, if, Mike, if you have any specific questions on the questions that you were going to ask tonight?
Yeah, I'll just kind of just jump in briefly to one of my anticipated questions and certainly thank you all for your interest in Winchester and applying, coming in. So I know you have vast land use experience with your firm and with Mark and with Jonathan. Now, as far as your expected interactions with the planning board, zoning board, how do you see that working and really your role in hearings and matters before each board?
I thought when I was land use counsel here that you underutilized me, to be honest with you. There were cases that got through the board where they made mistakes. And I was not notified that there was a case, let alone a mistake, until it happened. So I think that could be corrected. One of the issues that I thought was difficult in that regard the last round was your non-use of 4453G funds to fund not so much peer reviewers but legal help. And that takes it out of your budget, it allows me to be here at the developer's expense instead of yours. I mean, I wouldn't do it on a porch deck, but if you've got a big project, that's fair game. The development community is used to doing that in places a lot less demographically successful than Winchester. And it happens to me all the time. I'm, I work in Haverhill, for example. Mayor Fiorentini sends me on new projects where the developer is proposing a great new idea and he puts money in the treasures department so that I can draft the zoning or go to the hearing or do that kind of work. So there were some matters in litigation here that could have been avoided, including CVS, if I remember correctly, that, you know, we just didn't get the call. And that's a relationship that I had with the Board of Appeals more than with the planning board. And I think it also would be incumbent upon you to do it with Al's office because I got along really well with him. And, you know, just giving advice to him in terms of how to process something and pick up the phone would really be helpful, I think, in a lot of-
Staff, any official who's entitled to or empowered to grant any permit or license can use 53G. So Al, just as the ZBA or the planning board or the conservation commission, Al could also get 53G funds from developers so that you're getting the legal help in advance at the applicant's expense instead of after the fact at the town's expense, after something goes off the rails. In terms of approach for how I see my role when I'm sitting at the table with the board during a public hearing, I don't see my role as advocating for one position or another in most circumstances unless this board says, this is what you want, we want you to do. Most of the time, I'm there to answer questions and assist with procedure and help craft a decision. I don't view my role as making policy, I view my role as sort of facilitating the decisions of those local boards.
For those of you old enough to remember Watergate, I take the seat Sam Dash had, which was not facing the audience, it was always facing the board. So if the board was facing this way, I would sit there. And that sent a message that I'm not a board member, I'm here to revise the board. And I still do that. I'll make the table work for me every time I go to a meeting.
Mariana, two?
My questions were answered.
Okay. And Thea?
Question, thank you.
Okay. I guess we only have two minutes or so, but I did want to ask about how you would handle internal and external conflicts of interest. Certainly, we understand what external conflicts are, but, you know, there are matters that, you know, may arise internally, you know, between boards, between personnel. How do you address those in your practice?
Well, to the extent that it's one board and another board, you know, we take our direction in terms of what, what our job is from the select board and the town manager. So, you know, there are times when we might litigate a case that's, you know, or sit through a hearing and work on a permit, and later the board wants to challenge that. That's up to the board to decide. You know, it's not our place to say, oh, we'll jump in and represent then during the appeal or represent. We, we understand that there are policy issues that drive decision-making. And, you know, again, where our job is to carry that out. We also do avoid, if there is any kind of situation like that, we try to avoid having the person who was involved in the actual decision-making process, so, you know, at the meetings, at the hearings, et cetera, be the one that litigates if it's a different outcome than what's desired. So we don't want there to be a conflict of interest. We don't want to see the person that kind of sat through and filtered through the evidence, et cetera, being the one that, that is then standing up and representing the board. And in terms of external conflicts, we, I mean, well, let's go back to internal for a second. We deal with unbelievably wonderful municipal employees and boards throughout the state, obviously. But there are times when, you know, there's a difficult person or there's a difficult, you know, office or a difficult department. And, you know, our job is to facilitate, as Jonathan said, the work that needs to get done. That's what we do. It's not about personalities or about, you know, what one person, like what one municipal official might want. It's about how do we get the work of the municipality done? And we would obviously work closely with the town manager to make sure that, you know, we're kind of aware of what's going on. And so, so that we don't, you know, in any way undermine the process that's occurring. For external conflicts, mostly those happen with neighboring communities. It is usually, and we don't represent private clients in Winchester at all, but we very rarely represent private clients. And so there's never a time- Um, and so there's never a time when one of us is, you know, um, oh gee, we worked with that person or we, so we're never conflicted out like that. Um, there are times when, um, there'll be a regional school district issue, um, you know, a vocational school district issue, something where we represent a number of communities that may or may not have similar, uh, interests. If there are similar interests, we will do a disclosure. It's up to the select boards and the appointing authorities to tell us, you know, yeah, we know you represent them, but we think everyone's interests are the same. Um, and if not, we work very hard to get you qualified, uh, or to present to you some qualified, um, municipal attorneys who could step in instead. So, um, that's, that's really the only type of conflict that we, that we have.
And just really quickly on the issue of internal conflicts, I, I just want to reinforce what Lauren said, which is we're appointed by the select board. We take our ultimate orders from the select board through the, um, you know, town administration. And if there's a conflict between two, um, other boards, we have two roles, right? We're counsel on one level and we just call balls and strikes. We don't make decisions on, on which outcome is better. If it gets to the point where advocacy, we switch from counseling to advocating, that's gonna be the select board's call. So I've had situations, for instance, in Nantucket where, um, the planning board really disagreed with something the ZBA did, wanted to appeal. The, um, select board said, yeah, we agree with you. We, you know, we've heard both sides and we were directed to take that approach. And that's, you know, that's a policy decision and, uh, and we appealed that decision. So it, it's not, it can be uncomfortable sometimes, but it's not difficult to work through.
Any final questions for Iman? Well, I thank you all for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again for your time here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, wanna take a two-minute break?
Yeah.
He's in the building, he's just coming upstairs.
Okay.
Do you wanna?
Take a two-minute break?
Yeah.
Stand up.
Other than that, things that have worked really well, going through Beth and Mark is, is, and you know, is ideal. Going through a town manager's office was something we recommended going more towards when we started and certainly over the last couple of years. And I think it's, it's led to us and you having, you know, the sort of things that matter with a, with good answers. You get, we get better context and better direction of why we're being asked and sort of what's happening behind the ask. And, and I think it's sort of a, and you, hopefully, what we'd like to think is you're getting, you get clear feedback. So, I'd like to continue, you know, if we're gonna continue, I'd like to continue going through them. Obviously, there are times where it makes sense for that to spin off, because they can't be everywhere at once, but that's, that's sort of the ideal.
So, you know, I guess, just along the same lines, so Art Krieger, you know, obviously, he's been providing, you know, the land use advice to the town since the beginning. I know he's, you know, kind of slowed down, and rightfully so, you know, given, you know, how long he's practiced. But, so, so should we expect that you and Austin would, you know, kind of split the duties and fill that void where, you know, Art would be, you know, primarily at the ZBA hearings? I mean, I've seen you have planning boards, I've seen Art there, so, I mean, how, you know, how, how do you envision, you know, those duties being split?
Sure.
And certainly if Stephanie's gonna be in, involved, you know, as well, like, how do you, how do you see that working?
Yeah, so, and, you know, I, I guess I would say Stephanie and Jillian and their team are land use lawyers in the real estate transactional sense. I wouldn't expect them to necessarily be at those meetings, although there are times and actually, both Stephanie and Art's side of our, our shop were involved in sort of making the veil settlement work, right? There's a transactional piece. But generally speaking, let's take 10 Converse, you know, any of the kind of applicant-led matters. I think there's gonna, you know, I would, I would suggest a couple of things. You're mostly gonna see more of me in the permitting stage, or other senior associates kind of supervised by Austin and me as we see things going. If, if things seem like they're gonna go into litigation and, and we're prepping for that, I wouldn't say it's a complete split, you know, I'll take a case and, and Austin will take a case. Candidly, when we started here, because we had two, a split role between Art and me, it made sense for Art to do more of the things that were in his wheelhouse, which was land use. In Lexington and Concord for years, there's really been no distinction between who the select board gets and who the planning board gets or the zoning board gets. It's, it's me or my predecessors in that role. And I, I would envision doing more of that here. I think over time, it actually works better. It gives the manager sort of one direct person that they're talking to. It filters up issues through the manager's office better. I think that's something we can do better in terms of talking between the land use boards and, and your office. And it identifies, you know, the need for things like, and I, you know, obviously, this is not what you're here for tonight, but additional staffing in that area, right? Is, if we're seeing that, or additional training for, for boards and committees, if we're seeing it all the time. I, I can't say that we'll be at every meeting, and I don't think you want us to be, it's not efficient and it's probably not necessary, but there are some big projects and you have a lot of intensive, you know, really complex projects because of the, you know, kind of innovative things like the central business district that do require somebody really understanding it from beginning to end. And, and I would like, I guess, my, the ideal for me is if, you know, let's take a case that's already in litigation, so we're not, I'm not jinxing anything, like 654 Main. You know, that was one where it was very helpful for me to be there from the beginning to understa, or as close to the beginning as we could be, to understand the issues and work with Brian and Diab on, on framing the issues, work with the board on it, got frankly, I think, one of the potential litigants out of the way, because they understood where there were liticable issues and weren't. But at the same time, knowing if it was going to go into litigation, you know, we're already starting to pull Austin in before it got there, and if we kind of sense that's where it is, we're able to, I'm able to get him up to speed faster and vice versa, right? Whoever's there. So that'd be the ideal, is to kind of have the team that's gonna carry you through without making it seem like we're worried about this, we, we sent the litigator, or we're worried about this, we, we sent town council.
Well, you kind of touched on our second question a little bit, but Mike, I don't know if you wanted to-
No, it's okay, we can jump, jump ahead, I think he already covered that quite a bit.
Thanks. So, you know, I think a lot of these questions have been designed for, for people we don't know as well as you, so I don't know, Mariano, if, on your question, if you wanted to-
Well, I think we already know the answer to that, right? And that's the one where you would, where we would need to bring, you know, outside, special counsel, right? So.
Yeah, it would be extremely limited as far, as far as I can imagine. It would be the, you know, the continuing, any, any tax title, which is not efficient for a firm our size, I think most community firms, and labor council, because it's specialized. But, other than that, we've, we've been generally able to help.
Diab, do you wanna ask anything on your side of the question, or I can-
Uh, no, no, I think my understanding is if a town's under to litigation, you would handle it, Austin would handle it. There's no cases, most likely, where it would, would be outside of, or outside of, I guess, Krieger.
I, I wouldn't imagine any. There are, again, times where, you know, we might look at a case and make the decision well, well ahead of time that it would require, you know, some, some special expertise, but generally speaking, Austin, I can let you jump in there.
Yeah. I can't imagine any situation like that, and I don't know of any situation for other towns. I mean, we, you know, we handle a lot more than just land use litigation, we've got experience doing all kinds of various cases, so it's, it's hard to imagine any taller expertise that we don't have.
Yeah, and, and I would also say that, you know, one thing I can, you know, it's, it's always a little weird for me to brag with people I know, but I will brag about A and K a little bit on this. We, there, we've handled cases that are size-wise just huge, frankly, recently. We, because of our work for airports and some, and, and corporate entities, we've handled cases for LAX right now that are, you know, mountains and mountains of discovery. And, so, so we don't, I don't think, I can't imagine, like I said, a case where we wouldn't be able to step in. You know, if there were, for instance, eminent domain litigation, we've done that. Now, if, if we decide that it makes sense in that case because something is so time-intensive, you don't want us involved because you want us focused on something, we can talk about it, but I, you know, it'll be rare.
So, I guess, I mean, because we haven't had this issue since I've been on the board, but if we actually had, you know, a trial or something like that, would you be lead council on that, or would someone else from the firm cover that? How would you, how would you see that?
If, if we had a, yeah. If we had a trial, I would imagine Austin would be doing the actual heavy lifting as lead council, to the extent we need anyone more senior, which may not be likely for most things that municipalities have. It probably wouldn't be me, I would continue to play sort of like the outside GC role. It would be either Nina Pickering Cook, who is town council in a few other towns, but is, is also a more, more of a litigator primarily, or Christina Marshall, who's in the same role and you have worked with on town meeting and other issues, or Melissa Alice. I mean, we would be one of the sort of public sector litigators on our team that would probably step in if it were that. For instance, when I started as town council four or five years earlier than here, and I guess it's almost been 10 now, in Lexington, we had a massive case against a fire truck company for a defective fire truck. Dave Matthews, not a town council, but is, is a public sector guy and, and an experienced litigator, he kind of took the lead on that. My role, in a way, was the, the go-between, talking about the policy issues, I, I might be at settlement meetings or at, you know, mediation. I can, I can draft, you know, I can draft a brief and I can argue, I just don't really like discovery, so be quite honest, so it's not that I can't litigate it.
No, I don't blame you. Ah. Go ahead.
I, I mean, so the questions we had were, obviously, for somebody that we didn't know, but I do have a question. So you, you know, you brought up that you, you drove us to, to get more, more things through the town manager's office, right? So that, that helped with, you know, that helped you, but also helped control costs. What else, you know, what would you say, with the experience that you have with Winchester, what would you say that we could do in addition to that to control costs a little bit more?
Sure, that's a good question, and I, I feel like I'm talking a lot, so if either of you have more on this, feel free to. But one thing, and I guess one thing I would say is actually, as we continue to work with each other, which is what I hope we do, I'd like to think that the touch point where I take something in from the town manager's office to the point where it can come to somebody who knows that area of expertise well, can happen more quickly. And I think that's one area, and just looking at bills this past year, for instance, one thing that's caught my eye is my, my hours personally for Winchester versus some of other towns where we've been town council longer are frankly, are just higher. And I think there's been, you know, some of that has been issues that you really needed town council, the person involved in as opposed to a legal question, you know, Waterfield and Washington Swan, et cetera. But I'd like to be able to turn something over to Stephanie's team, you know, a simple easement and step out of the way, and then you don't have to pay for my time, you're, you're getting that draft. You're getting some of that today, but I think we can do a better job moving some of that. I, I think we've done a good job of streamlining some things, maybe others would also be streamlined. Town meeting takes significantly less time than it used to to prep for, not always a town, but to prep for. The contracts, I think, take a lot less time than when we started, because we've standardized a lot of that. I think we'd look for more opportunities to do that, and so, and so we, you know, for instance, we, if we're building a better relationship with board and committee chairs, it might mean that we're not, you know, catching up and by being at hearings, but we're catching up offline, having the conversation, and then you're saving the three or four hours of our time there, because the committee chair and the, you know, Brian or, or Janine are, are sort of well-prepared on what the issues might be.
So, I mean, that gets to a question I had, that we had a lot of great firms here tonight, they talked about how, what terrific litigators they are. And, you know, litigation to me is, you've already lost, because we're just spending tons of money.
Yeah.
And we want to avoid that. So, is, so is your experience that it's more training for our committees and staff to help manage expectations? Because I think sometimes people go in and they think they're, they're entitled to something, and they're really not. And so then we end up and every, then they have egos come into the equation, and it's a disaster. So, but, you know, I like to be more conciliatory when possible, and, and so what are your thoughts on that? And because you look at our legal bills, it's-
Yeah, and there's no question that in every town, when, and you, you know, you saw, you guys asked that really interesting question of asking firms to identify their budgets for other towns and, and sort of where they exceeded, it's always when litigation gets out of hand, right? I would say that there is a bit of it of sort of being clear on rules and expectations for the places where litigation starts, which is often permitting. I think if you look over the past couple of years, there's, actually, when we started, there was, there was a bit more litigation, it seemed, you know, we had, the, the old boat club cases, unfortunately, so it's a comeback, the, you know, the Tukusi case, and then the sort of thinking of those, case after case. And so there is a bit of this, you know, John, where I, I think it's sort of that part of it. But, in my experience, the biggest thing that makes a difference is your early issue spotting. And I think that's been true here, too. And I will admit that there are places where we probably, that's one thing I want to improve on going forward, is with a more unitary, you know, obviously we have a team, but, you know, sort of everything kind of going through one person, I would hope that, that issue spotting happens more easily. You know, we average, in both Concord and Lexington, we've averaged one to maybe three pieces of zoning litigation a year. Now, there is one, you know, massive piece of, of kind of a, a land dispute in, in Concord, so that's, that's been very expensive, but other than that, we don't get a lot of appeals. We've, we've had a lot more appeals here recently, so I, I think that's one piece of it. And I, and I think, you know, again, this is outside of this role, but I would like to think about with, with the manager's office, what other support they need that's outside of our office that helps, helps them do that issue spotting. You know, the, there's, it's, it's not surprising to me where the, you know, that you have had, this is not a knock on the ZBA versus the planning board, but the planning board has, you know, a dedicated planner who's there at every meeting and can tell them, say, that's not what that part of the zoning bylaw means in any town, and, you know, and, and you can, and can, and, you know, again, the chair or others can bounce questions off them. There's not surprisingly less litigation, there's not apps in it, but it's, it's, it's fewer cases than the ZBA. And, and they don't get, they get Janine, who does a wonderful job, but she's sort of being asked to wear multiple hats. So I, I think helping her from our office until we can figure out whether there is more help she needs, again, not my role, but I, I would say that's where I've noticed the biggest change, is, is having that issue spotting.
If I can add on to that, I think also, it's possible to have litigation come up in a way that the town is less invested and can take more of a backseat, you know, if the, if a board grants a permit to a developer and the town is comfortable with the way that the decision is written, and we don't end up getting challenges to the town's interpretations of its bylaws, or something that the town has a stake in litigating, we can take more of a backseat as town council and let the developer fight it out with the, with the people repealing. So, there are ways, even if you continue to get litigation, that it can be less expensive, because if we are able to get involved earlier and, you know, are comfortable with what, how the decision is written and there's, we don't open ourselves, we don't open the town to challenges to the way that the bylaws are being interpreted, or some other issue that the town really cares about and has to defend in litigation, that can also make things cheaper.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Uh, well, I thank you all for coming in.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Appreciate it, good to see you.
Good to see you.
See you in person?
Yeah.
All right. So I know it's been a long night, so, you know, I don't think we're gonna take a vote tonight on any of this, I think give everyone time to digest this, but I did want to at least ask, there were, I think, at least two law firms that we did not interview in the process. So, first question I would ask each of you at this point is, do you think we need to interview those law firms, or are you content with the, the five choices that we have at this point to choose from?
I'm okay with the ones that we've chosen at this point, I think that we, you know, kind of went through a long discussion to reach the point of identifying these firms, so, personally, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. I just wanted to make, make sure that, you know, because we could schedule other interviews if necessary with, with those firms as well. I, I agree, I tend to agree, so, that was the first question. So, the, the idea would be to come back on Monday at our meeting and have a discussion about this, and, you know, move it forward with a vote. The question I have at this point is, do you, do you anticipate, and you may not at this point, but do you anticipate wanting to have follow-up interviews, like narrow the field down and have follow-up interviews, or do you think, you know, and again, we don't have to answer this tonight, but, you know, be thinking if you've had enough, you know, face time with these firms to, to make a decision and, and, you know, vote, or is it that we want to narrow it down and bring people back in for a second round of interviews? So.
Maybe we'll just have a discussion amongst ourselves about how we felt about each firm, and, you know, then do we need to, do we kind of consensus, like, we feel good about something, or we need to go and ask more questions of even a shortlist? I'm not trying to waste anybody's time and drag the process out, but I just think there's, we should have a discussion about versus coming in and just voting.
Well, no, I agree, I mean, that would be-
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, and my only comment with that is that, you know, it's our appointing authority, but town council works with a lot of other boards, so I'd like to get feedback from the planning board, from the ZBA, from the Conservation Commission, at least their chairs. I, I know the, the moderator also works with town council, so if there's, if they have any feedback for us on the proposals and the interviews that we did tonight, I'd like to see those before, you know, before we think about, or, or we decide if there's additional questions.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
From other boards.
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously we have some people here tonight watching, and certainly it's, it's recorded, so, you know, I would encourage, and we can send a directive out to, to the boards, you know, to watch, and if they have feedback, to get it to us, you know, preferably, you know, by Monday, so that we can have an informed discussion on Monday about it. You know, our, and, and see if we can move this forward on Monday. Go from there.
I mean, that's a pretty short timeline, right? Last time we did this, we had a much longer timeline, and we got a lot more involvement from different boards and committees, so I think that that's the expectation, that we would open it up a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, I think at that point, we were moving from a different model that we had, I mean, we had, we developed at that point, I mean, we, we were transitioning from a different model to another, and so I certainly think that was involved, you know, involved a, a much broader process. At, you know, at this point, you know, it would be, if we were to make a change, it would be from one firm to the next, you know, and I think as we saw tonight, they all seem to have the same approach, so.
Through you, we have two of the four people that I mentioned in the audience, if we could ask them if they think that they could have feedback for us by Monday, or if we had to wait until, you know.
What do others think about that?
I mean, I think anybody can write to us, I think we'll, you know, hear from residents, we'll hear from stakeholders, you know, I think we wanted to move forward kind of efficiently, efficiently with the, with this process, so, you know, I'm happy to take it up on Monday and hear from folks.
I think if we, if that's sufficient time, then that would be great, to be able to hear from them, but it, it is a, it is a tight turnaround, so, you know, if we need to be cognizant of asking someone to watch a two and a half hour meeting over the next three days.
Yep.
That's good.
You know, I just want to keep this moving forward, I mean, we, we, you know, the contract technically expires the end of June, we've extended it to the end of July, there'll be a transition period as well, so, certainly not looking to rush this, but also, you know, we have engaged in the process, we have RFPs, we already had one meeting to discuss to narrow that field down, we've now conducted interviews, we'll have a discussion on Monday, so, you know, the idea would be to, to keep this, you know, you know, moving along.
Could we ask them if they can, if they think Monday, if they can get back to us by this weekend?
Ask who?
Diab and Heather, the chair of the planning board and the moderator, two of the four that I mentioned that work with town council often.
I mean, we, sure, we cast, I mean, on the other-
I think, I think a lot of our, you know, there's a lot of, you know, boards and commissions that, that work with town council, I mean, it's just, you know, Conservation Commission as well, the Housing Partnership Board, so, yeah, I think anybody can submit-
In all of our questions, we mentioned the planning board and the ZBA, right? So, we have the chair of the planning board here, so he could mention if he can give, I mean, he's a ten, he doesn't have to watch the meeting, so I think he could tell us if he can give feedback to us by this weekend. To me, that's the most important, I mean, obviously, we'll get feedback from residents, but I think it's important that who town council is going to be working with the most is the ZBA and the planning board, right? As well as the moderator during town meetings, season.
I, I guess I don't understand what you're asking, I mean, if-
Well, Diab, can you give us feedback by this weekend on?
I'm not allowed to speak.
Sure.
If this were the planning board, I would be able to just jump in, but I don't know how it works in this select board.
Do you think you can give us feedback by this weekend?
If I had a chance to look at proposals, I could give you that, if I just go based on the interview, I don't get the whole picture, and I know that you have a packet, and I don't know if that's public, but certainly, I can give my opinion on what I hear in the interview.
Can we make these five available?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I have one.
I mean, this is not an executive session, so.
We have hard copies, we don't have electronic, so.
Yeah, we didn't request electronically from them, so I bet-
They're available in the town manager's offices, yeah. To, to come and take a look.
I, I know that we can't call a planning board meeting before then to meet as a board, but just, we don't have 48 hours, so, and I can't discuss it with my colleagues, so.
I'm, I'm looking for your feedback, I said, just the planning board.
I can, I can provide feedback by Monday, if I were to get the, the proposals, I would be able to put my better feedback.
Okay, so can we make copies for?
I, I heard a lot of people say the same thing tonight, so in order to figure out what makes one team more special, I need to know more about them, so.
I can give you my, I, I can give you my copy, Diab.
Okay.
And you just return it to me.
So, so I, I have a different situation than everyone else, because I don't represent a board or a committee, I represent town meeting, and I can provide my own person as a moderator, but I, I do think it's very, for boards and committees, they, like, Diab can represent himself, but he's not representing the planning board when he speaks to you, because he hasn't got the planning board to speak on their behalf. I can do that, I can meet that deadline, no problem, because I just speak as myself as the moderator, I don't need to have town meeting's approval for me to speak my opinions and my thoughts and how, what legal counsel, I thought would be most appropriate for my purposes for town meeting, but I think, I know you're out of time on this crunch, but to be fair to those boards and committees, you only ask of the chair, the chair cannot speak on behalf of the work that is before your entire board or committee.
So, we're gonna take this up on Monday, if anyone has feedback, you know, certainly we can, you know, take it up on Monday, and we'll further the discussion, see how far we get on Monday. I think that's the best mechanism, so I would encourage everyone to get any feedback in as, as, if they can, and we'll see how far we get on Monday and go from there. I think that's all we can do. We've, we've had a long night, certainly a lot of information to digest on our appointment, and, you know, we'll, we'll try to get as far as we can on Monday.
Have we notified the chairs of boards and committees that we're doing this, and that these are available at the town manager's office for them to review?
We can certainly do that. You know, this hasn't been a secret.
Well, with the first time, but I think, I, I mean, I think that would, I think we could, you know, we can send an email to the, you know, I think Conservation, ZBA, Conservation Commission, Board of Health, just the ones that have used town council, like, we, we have the list of which boards and committees have used town council in the last year.
Okay.
I mean, I think it should be pretty broad, you know, if we're gonna, then-
Send out to all the boards.
Yeah, it's, you know, so, not pick and choose, but, and, you know, let people know that there's a recording available if they want to watch the interviews. My, you know, my only concern, too, is, you know, if we made it clear, and I'm, I'm sure they're aware, but if everybody that applied, if their packet and their response is going to be public and available and, you know, circulated, I would check with them first, just because there's a lot of specific information in there. I think in the RFP, or Mark left, but I, I think it says-
Does it say that?
It should say that it's, it's available to public, it becomes public, you know, part of the public domain.
We're in an open session, right? So all of our materials are open, we're not in an executive session.
Yep.
Should've asked everybody, every, their opinion.
That should've been one of the questions.
All right. We do have some business tonight, just on the, we have an appointment, Beth?
We do, yeah. So, in accordance with section four dash two B of the town charter, I have made the following regular full-time appointment, and the Human Resources Department slash Benefits Coordinator of Yada Malika, Human Resources Benefits Coordinator, and I respectfully requested the board waive the usual 15-day appointment period, and she is scheduled to start on July 1st.
Great. Can we get a motion to that effect?
Can I just read his name?
Yep.
I have moved that we waive the 15-day waiting period for the town manager to appoint the Human Resources Department Benefits Coordinator of Yada Malika.
Same.
Alton in favor?
Aye.
Great. Unanimous. I think that's everything. So a motion to adjourn would be considered?
Motion to adjourn.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thanks, everyone, thanks, Wecam.